Good morning, and I now call the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine twenty-four A.M. Please silence your electronic devices to disturbing others. Marion and modeling, how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. Now I'm going to read our commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. I'd now like to ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Good morning, Ms. Martinez. Please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting.
Good morning. The notice for the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Proof of publication has been attached to board docs under proof of publication.
We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. On this cold morning yet again, I want to start with just a couple of quick updates and thanks to our entire district, parents, students with your diligence through this weather. We had, for the record, no snow, no ice that I'm aware of, and so safe travels to school. And so we appreciate everybody's flexibility as we ensure that during the day as our students arrive to school that we had activities held indoors to try to keep everybody warm. But, and I would just want to extend also my thoughts to the folks out in California dealing with yet again more fires, and they've lost schools already. And so we have students that don't have places to go during the day, and that is really hard for our children. So I just want to extend my thoughts to them, knowing how hard that is. So however we can help in the future, we're happy to do so. Board, I also wanted to do a reminder that today we have our independent Oversight Committee for our referendum, operational referendum, and then my team is going to present an update, quarterly update to that committee that you have recommended. And also a reminder for next week, we have our two-hour early dismissal day on January twenty-ninth. So that's coming up right around the corner, that is next Wednesday. And so we have three topics today, Board, and we are going to kick off with the last of our strategic plan, our Goal Five today. And then we will, as you know, go back through, do any updates, and then go back through the cycle again. So that concludes my update this morning. Chair, if you would like me to introduce the first topic.
Yes, ma'am, please do.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring Ms. Harris forward, who is going to kick off Goal Five that I referenced. Again, this is a standalone goal, but also it is foundational to our other goals as it certainly includes key components of communication. And you will hear, as you always do, how this fits in with all of our other goals and our work day-to-day in our schools for our students. So Ms. Harris, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, so good morning, Chair Conrad, Vice Chair Cummings, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. This morning, it is my pleasure to introduce the presenters that will share information on Goal Five of the strategic plan. Again, I am Shawna Harris, Executive Director of K-12 Support. I'm joined by Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of Public Relations, Megan Magambel, Executive Director of Public Education Foundation, and Yama Lee Gonzalez, our Communications Manager. Goal Five focuses on enhancing community engagement and communication by increasing stakeholder dialogue, partnerships, and collaboration to meet the needs of our staff and celebrate success. Key strategies include expanding community partnerships to support student success, strengthening two-way communication with families through improved transparency and engagement. We also strive to enhance internal communications by improving information access and recognizing employee contributions. Additionally, through Goal Five, the district will engage families and community as partners to support student achievement, attendance, and well-being through initiatives such as community events, family engagement initiatives, and professional learning opportunities for our school advisory councils. These efforts will foster strong connections, trust, and a culture of collaboration across the district. Key milestones have been achieved in advancing community engagement and communication. A district liaison has been established to enhance collaboration between the school district and various stakeholders, ensuring effective communication. The implementation of the Code of Civility has further strengthened respectful and productive partnerships between schools and the community. Additionally, family-focused events, which are now in Goal Five, have successfully exceeded their participation targets, reflecting the district's commitment to fostering meaningful family engagement and support. Each goal was assigned a board member to review its outcome metrics and associated targets. During our team discussions, we emphasized the importance of prioritizing quality metrics over purely quantitative ones. The first two metrics highlighted in green exemplify this focus by measuring meaningful engagement rather than the numbers. Our goal is to amplify family voice by intentionally increasing survey participation to assess event satisfaction and gather valuable feedback on future topics and areas of improvement. Additionally, we have chosen to track returning families, recognizing that much like customers, families return to experiences they find beneficial and impactful. Furthermore, four additional metrics, also highlighted in green, were introduced to evaluate and enhance our social media presence. We aim to increase audience engagement across the platforms representing Marion County Public Schools, ensuring our outreach efforts effectively connect and inform our community. Now coming to the podium will be Mr. Kevin Christians.
Good morning to each of you.
Good morning.
I have five layers on, so I'm still cold. But nevertheless, you'll see the next slide there. Expanding and monitoring our community partnerships continues to create new student learning opportunities. And some of our steps to doing so include the tools that you see listed there. First up, community partner meetings, these are generally held on a monthly basis and offer communication exchange between our school district and various external agencies and organizations. These exchanges often lead to opportunities for students to volunteer and also for community involvement, adult volunteer opportunities benefiting students and schools, and even some idea exchanges that spark additional partnership opportunities between everybody in the room participating. So those are valuable to us. Our next tool is Peach Jar. Are you familiar with Peach Jar? Hopefully you are, yes. Peach Jar is our e-flyer program that basically replaces putting paper-based flyers in backpacks that usually end up on the floor of the bus or buried at the bottom of the backpack and are not seen by parents and families until days after that event takes place or whatever that is promoting. But the Peach Jar service provides community organizations the opportunity to share their information directly with our school communities. This past year, our Peach Jar activities included two hundred and thirty-nine internal flyers that sent from the central office and from schools themselves, two thousand and eighty-one external flyers from outside entities. Interestingly, I always love this number. We avoided two-point-eight million pieces of paper being handled in our district. And we are one of twenty-one Florida school districts that use the Peach Jar service. And we do not pay for that service. It is, we paid, what, nine years ago when we established the service, and we do not pay to use it on an annual basis. It is funded through those entities that wish to use it to share their information. Dr. James, I see you shaking your head. You're familiar with it, I'm sure. So moving on, collaboration with our local governments led to, of course, the inter-local agreement that now benefits our district when it comes to new growth and how that growth is funded, at least in part. We also had great participation in our three recent groundbreakings for new schools from our partnering government entities. And we look forward to even more collaboration now that our new Government Relations Director is on board. Next up, Leadership MCPS is now in its third year and will graduate its latest members in just a few months. This year-long program offers monthly meetings that dive deep into our district operations and academic opportunities to help our community members better understand how we operate on a day-to-day basis. And we now have a great opportunity for an alumni group to continue graduate involvement with our district following graduation. Another high-profile partnership involves our district and local veterans groups. To present our community's official Veterans Day ceremony each November, our latest program was our eighteenth annual presentation and involved more than three thousand students from over thirty schools, plus hundreds of community members who attended to show their appreciation to local veterans. And we are grateful to those of you who were able to join us that day. The weather was dramatically different that day than it is today. Continuing on with this same strategy, additional partnership opportunities includes Dads on Duty. And of course, this involves male member mentoring groups who volunteer on our campuses to support students and provide encouragement with simple smiles and gestures. As more males qualify to volunteer, we hope this program expands to even more campuses. The Third Annual Back-to-School Community Giveback Event provided over six thousand backpacks to our students who responded to nine locations throughout Marion County. Most of those events were on the same Saturday back in July. Hundreds of volunteers, including students, helped this event succeed even more than in previous years. So that's a, I think, a newer event that has quickly become an annual tradition and a wonderful opportunity for lots of organizations to be part of the same mission on the same day. Next up, your interaction with state legislators continues, and your legislative agenda continues as well, and we're grateful for that. In addition, some of our schools host state legislator and even congressional visits from time to time with our elected officials wanting to learn more or share more about our community with our students, with our schools, and as I mentioned, with our community itself. We also continue partnering with the CEP and appreciate their help in supporting both the inter-local agreement and promoting the half-cent sales tax approved by voters just a few months ago. We look forward to this continuing partnership as we continue growing and appreciate their support in helping with our recent groundbreaking ceremonies for our new schools. We thank them for the shovels. We are grateful to that. And I believe, Dr. Gullett, you had the opportunity to present to Mr. Shelley yesterday, his departure. Next up, the Marion County Hospital District and its Fans Program. Okay, quick quiz, Fan stands for?
Fitness and nutrition in schools.
Well done, Board. Well done. This provides tasty and meaningful opportunities to our students at all grade levels to be more active when it comes to their own diets, their exercise routines, and their lifestyles. Fans contributions lead to raised, or have led to raised garden beds, crop growing, and even taste-testing new vegetables, all educating students about new menu options and healthy choices. Finally, Career Source provides incredible support to numerous events throughout the year, primarily with our Human Resources Department, career fairs involving students, and job fairs attracting new employees. So now, you know this young lady, Ms. Megan Magambel.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, and good morning all. As the five oh one C three nonprofit organization serving Marion County Public Schools, the Public Education Foundation the Public Education Foundation supports the district goals in many ways. And today, I'm proud to share updates on Goal Five specifically for expanding and monitoring partnerships, increasing student learning opportunities. And I will start with the continued partnership work we have with the district's Mental Health and Wellness Team with the shared goal of building student resiliency. While the majority of the partnership efforts launched in the 2023-24 school year, we expanded that partnership to continue additional support going into summer and quarter one of this school year, which included trauma-based informed care support for Wyamina Park Elementary, mentoring services for summer programming through Children's Alliance for the students participating in the skip program, resiliency-based exposure trips for MCPS students participating in Cut Difference mentoring program. And we helped purchase and provide each school in our district with resiliency-themed, age-based reading materials that were identified and promoted by the Department of Education's Commissioner Manny Diaz. Expanded partnerships year two with the district's Safe Schools team is thanks to our continued partnership with Mackenzie's Moment. By the end of this spring, we will have provided approximately $435,000 in support for Safe Schools efforts across the district with our shared goal to make schools safer faster. That partnership with Mackenzie's Moment also led to a new partnership with our homeless department, or Families in Transition. They provided $10,000 in support for the Angel Tree so that the families in need during the holidays had gifts for Christmas. Our continued partnership to support career and technical education includes the World Equestrian Center's support for culinary programs, bringing celebrity chefs to meet and inspire our students, to providing hands-on experience at the World Equestrian Center. This partnership has provided $75,000 to date to go towards enhancing culinary equipment, providing student resources, uniforms, et cetera, and of course, the magical priceless moments of having celebrity chefs shake hands with our students and say things like, "You are incredible, and as soon as you graduate Marion County Public Schools, I have a job for you." A new partnership through our foundation that was announced at the start of this school year is thanks to HCA Florida Healthcare, a commitment of $60,000 to increase student participation in our healthcare pathways and increase certification completion rates. Additionally, the foundation's partnership with DeLuca Foundation from the prior year resulted in the first Behavioral Mental Health Technician Certification Pathway launched at Bellevue High School this fall, with Westport High School seated to launch for next year. And we also continued and expanded our partnership to support family-focused events into year two, thanks to Florida Kid Care. These partnerships that I've identified alone are an increase in $374,000 for student learning opportunities. Additional examples of partnerships that are new or expanded through the foundation. We are a proud new partner with University of Florida's Lasting Earth Center through their New Worlds Reading Initiative, promoting literacy for VPK through fifth-grade families. From the summer into the fall, we already partnered and assisted with hosting literacy events at East Marion Elementary, Spar Elementary, College Park Elementary, and their Community Partnership School, Reddick Collier Elementary, and we have three more events that we will sponsor and support this spring. For year two of our partnership with the Ocala Film Derby, the foundation is proud to support facilitating and managing their newly established student scholarships. So now, not only does that partnership provide that real hands-on experience for our students, but it's tied to their academic journey for post-secondary opportunities. We continued into year five of our partnership with the Ocala Horse Alliance and continue supporting their efforts for the Black Stallion Reading Project in each of our district's elementary schools. We continued support for the district's launching literacy in the community efforts and purchased additional books and coins for the book vending machine that we had purchased last year. We continue supporting the Kids Tag Art Program as their fiscal agent in partnership with Marion County Tax Collector's Office. We continue partnering with the Silver River Museum Educational Center and Science Lab to support STEM initiatives, thanks to incredible donors like Duke Energy, Lockheed Martin, and the Felburn Foundation. And we are proud sponsors of the upcoming Big Spring STEM Fair. To expand college readiness opportunities, we have new partnerships this year with Wells Fargo, South State Bank to increase financial literacy efforts, and a new partnership with AT&amp;T to help students cross the digital divide and address cyber safety issues, especially with our students about to head off to college. A new partnership with the Marion Theater in downtown Ocala was launched this summer and continued into first semester with the introduction of resiliency reels, family-friendly movies for students and their family to attend for free, tied to the resiliency characteristics embedded in our K-12 curriculum, promoting student resiliency. And the last slide for my foundation updates regarding Strategy 5A will review our signature programs of the foundation. Take Stock in Children and our Senior Scholarship Program both provided student scholarships totaling more than $360,000 for students who entered the Fall 2024 College Semester. Through our Tools for Teaching program, we provided more than $500,000 in classroom supplies last year, thanks to an incredible and very long list of partners that make that work possible. That list could go on and on, but all to equip our teachers and be able to help their students succeed in the classroom. And a brand-new partnership with Tools for Teaching is thanks to Altrusa. Last week, thanks to Altrusa, we were able to open the NOOK, which is a teacher's space for teachers to come and sit and network, have a cup of coffee, read motivational materials like Chicken Soup for the Teacher's Soul, and honestly, just breathe and feel loved. Our School Business Partnership Program, we continue to match our schools with businesses to support their efforts. We will have a historic year in financial contributions. Previously, $200,000 for the year was our goal, and this year, we are on track to be over $300,000 in support. Through Take Stock in Children, we continue to provide the scholarships Mentors &amp; Hope for our deserving low-income students, serving more than 200 students per year, thanks to partnerships like Project SOS and Signature Brands and their scholarships. Through our Grants for Great Ideas program, we partner with the Consortium of Florida Education Foundation to increase opportunities for teachers and schools to have innovative projects focusing on STEM, literacy, increasing graduation rates, assisting low-performing students, career and technical education, and supporting our students in need. Before the winter break, we sent out $61,000 in funds so schools could implement their amazing Grant for Great Idea proposals. And we will be opening a second round of grant funding for the spring. And now, I bring up Mr. Kevin Christian for Strategy 5B.
You've never been involved with those, reading those Grants for Great Ideas applications. That's fun. I encourage you to do that. Yes, moving on to Strategy 5B, when it comes to strengthening two-way district communication and engagement with families and with our community, I'd like to showcase several of the tools that we use. First up, you see Fast Facts. Hopefully, you're familiar with that. That is a quick summary of recent school board decisions that you have made that's shared immediately following each school board meeting. This e-newsletter is emailed internally to all employees and posted on multiple webpages on our website, including your school board page for easy access. And I'm happy to share that, once again, Fast Facts earned an honorable mention, honor from NSPR, the National School Public Relations Association. Next up, and perhaps most familiar with people in our community, our Skylert messaging. That is our primary communications platform when it comes to both school and district-based messaging. Here's some interesting stats for you. This past year, we shared over 3.7 million phone calls, 3.2 million emails, and 502,000 text messages. Those numbers are 5% to 35% higher than the previous year, proving that we are sharing more information with more people. As well, the district itself utilized Skylert more than 315 times with an average per message success rate surpassing 93%. And I will tell you that that 93% in talking with vendors who offer communications platforms throughout the country, 93% is unheard of. It's usually 75%, 80%, maybe 83, 84, 85%, but 93%. What that means is that our schools are doing a great job of ensuring that they have accurate working contact information for students and employees. The message that went out last night had a 94.1% success rate. So I'm very proud of that number, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes that make that number happen. Next up, streaming our school board meetings and work sessions provides a valuable service to those unable to join us in person, for whatever reason. Our YouTube audience analytics will be shared shortly, but I'm happy to say we have just under 10,000 subscribers. That may have surpassed that number, the most we've ever had. And of course, we also utilize our district YouTube channel for additional programming like the Ocala Christmas Parade, the Golden Apple Gala, and the Marion County Student Media Festival. Our next request platform is where we handle public records requests from the public. In 2023, we closed 222 requests. Last year, we had 169 that were closed, and this year, this is outdated, we have seven, we have 10 so far. This service offers community members a quick and easy way to request public records throughout the year and provides a documented process to help us receive, process, and meet requests for public information. Continuing on with Strategy 5B, our media releases. We regularly communicate with more than 75 local media contacts from Gainesville to Orlando to Tampa. Last year, we used 67 media releases to do so, and so far this year, we're at 31. So we're pretty much right on track to meet or even exceed what we did last year. Media releases are also shared internally with all employees and posted to our website for public access. One media release alone last year, and I'll let you guess which one, received an Award of Excellence from NSPR and garnered $57,405 in earned media value at no cost to the district. Want to guess? Our groundbreaking. Moving on, the success of family-focused events has been previously shared, and there is more to follow. But it's certainly on target to say these events are growing and attracting more families and, perhaps more importantly, engaging them. We continue using internal and external surveys to gauge audience engagement. Those surveys include Skylert and Survey Monkey Tools, along with Cognia, which administers its own survey based on our input. The importance of these surveys is proven with our district's recent Cognia accreditation. Another valuable tool for communicating is the school marquee. For schools with functioning electronic ones, along with the traditional block letter marquees, you know, where you put those plastic letters up, this visual reminder is a constant and reliable tool to share information. Dr. Campbell, I'll mention this to you because I know you would say this to me, but is it truly two-way communication? I would argue that yes, it is, because people see and read that information that they later act on, most prominently either with their attendance or other some form of support. So while they may not verbalize that, they are showing up with their attendance based on the information that they see on the school marquee. All right, finally, snippet stories come from our digital media producers. It's part of the public relations team. These short-form videos, not reels, right? Not reels, okay. Showcase student and staff achievement, current trends and topics, and other topics. They are shared on our YouTube channel and our social media platforms and even generate traditional media coverage from time to time. Our most popular snippet story last year featured band students rehearsing their marching program during football season. That video, I believe, went viral with over 13, no, I'm sorry, 10,000 views. May not sound like a whole lot in the social media world, but for us, 10,000 views, that's a lot of people watching. So now, speaking of social media, I'd like to introduce to you formally for the first time, Ms. Yamalie Gonzalez, our Communications Manager. She's been with us since August, but she hasn't had a chance to present.
Morning.
Good morning.
I think you all can tell I've taught Kevin one or two things about social media, so that's my first thing. The district is active on Facebook, YouTube, and X to improve communication and strengthen engagement with families and the community. We are currently planning and building content to reactivate our Instagram account. The Public Education Foundation can also be found on Facebook. Based on social media analytics, engagement increased by 428.6% across all platforms November 15, 2023 to November 6, 2024. Facebook saw 45.8% increase in content interaction during this period. Most metrics show increased reach, engagement, post-link clicks, and impressions across our social media channels. As of yesterday, our Facebook page reached 10,000 followers. X has 4.3 thousand. YouTube, we are close, 9.9 thousand subscribers, and Instagram, 459. One of our posts with the most engagement was during Hurricane Milton. On October 9, we featured shelter workers on our Facebook, and the post received 336 likes, 20 shares, 15 comments, and reached 13,000 people. Posts with similar engagement include the National Principals Month graphic, a post recognizing Oak Crest Carlia Williams and her achievements, and this year's Principal and AP of the Year. Each received over 200 likes and in total, received 111 comments and reached 22,000 people total. One of our top-performing videos was of Ms. Shannon Randolph from Transportation explaining a day in the life of a bus driver and the need for MCPS bus drivers. It gained 13.8 thousand views, 123 likes, 18 comments, and 42 shares. So for our plan for 2025 is to establish a consistent posting schedule and post at least twice a day to maximize audience engagement. We also aim to reactivate Instagram to connect with a younger audience, especially our students. Posts will vary between Facebook, X, and Instagram to suit the different audiences on each platform. Since August, we've contacted all schools to ensure their social media pages are under district management. This helps protect the page administrators from public records law and ensures all posts are archived. However, while the district manages the pages, the district does not post on individual school media pages.
The Family Engagement Team hosts quarterly family-focused events with a range of themes designed to support families throughout the school year. These events help families get off to a strong start at the beginning of the year, assist students in transitioning from key grade levels to college or post-secondary plans, and prepare them for a productive summer. To make these events more accessible, each one is hosted in a different middle school across the district. The Family Focus Mobile Unit also attends both daytime and evening school events, providing valuable academic resources for parents of students from pre-K through 12th grade. It's actually out today because of the cold weather. It was struggling getting started at first, but it is going to two schools today, so that's just a real-time update. Families are encouraged to explore the unit together and participate in hands-on activities and create make-and-take materials to support learning at home. Our Learning Labs are a vehicle to build capacity in our family engagement liaisons. We continue to offer professional learning to our family engagement liaisons that culminates with a family engagement showcase. The Family Engagement District Advisory Council serves as a venue for parents to influence decisions that impact their child's education. We work together with other families, educators, and community members to create positive solutions for our school community and provide input on district-wide family engagement initiative. The council meets four times annually. Federal Programs offers four professional learning opportunities to school advisory council chairs and co-chairs to create site-based community and family engagement, dialogue amongst stakeholders to build capacity, and to use data-driven decisions and identify problem areas, develop improvement strategies, and cultivate partnerships to improve student achievement. During the 23-24 school year, During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the number of completed surveys doubled from the beginning of the year to receiving ten surveys to twenty at our final event. This year, you can see our progress from our first event in September, getting a return of twenty-nine surveys from our families, and our November event with fifty-eight. We are looking to continue and get a feedback from our families. To further enhance participation and achieve our goals, several initiatives have been implemented. Participant Bingo Cards. They offer an opportunity for our families to go to our exhibitors in our exhibit hall and get a sticker. On the back of that, there is a survey, but it enters them to receive free prizes. We have put the surveys in different locations throughout the event, so they could also give us feedback electronically via QR codes, and then it's also the physical form for those that prefer to write on it. And also, it is featured in another language of Spanish, so our parents will be able to have access to give us feedback. Additionally, the Spend the Will Initiative, if they return a survey, they're also allowed to spread a will to get a free gift for their child upon completing a survey. For Strategy Five C, our focus is also on increasing the number of families attending two or more in-person family-focused events throughout the school year. In the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, fourteen families met this milestone, and our goal is to increase that number to twenty-three families. To achieve this, we will implement several key initiatives. The Family Focus Loyalty Program will encourage continued participation by offering incentives and recognition. We are also enhancing outreach efforts by providing personal invitations to our families for each event. Additionally, our family engagement liaisons will be equipped with session topics, scripts for phone calls, and marketing ideas to better promote events within their networks at each of their schools. The Family Focus Mobile Unit plays a crucial role in advertising at events and serving as a visible promotional tool. Our team also actively engages with attendees at each event to promote future opportunities. To expand our reach, we are forming partnerships with youth programs in different religious institutions, broadening our community engagement and ensuring more families benefit from these valuable experiences.
Moving on to Strategy Five D. Strengthening internal communication and recognizing our employees' contributions is our next strategy. We'll start with crisis communications and ever-evolving, and we hope, ever-improving process. We noted major growth with audience satisfaction this past year during hurricane season, when we were able to notify our own families and employees first when school was canceled. This major milestone, and I will give Dr. Gullett credit because she deserves it and it's very important, allowed us to build credibility and trust within our own audiences, so they heard the news from us first before seeing or reading about it anywhere else. In coming months, we hope to consider an all-encompassing communications platform that will enhance these efforts even more, as well, expanding and using more internal texting groups now provides identical information to multiple audiences in a quick and efficient manner, and I believe each of you is included, at least in one or two of those groups, so. Up next, superintendent visits. These happen kind of sporadically, and with surprise when someone recognizes an employee for going above and beyond when serving students. We generally recognize these with social media posts and in superintendent's weekly wrap-up episodes. Dr. Gullett simply shows up by surprise in these classrooms or office areas to present a certificate that says, "Thank you for going above and beyond when it comes to our students." So that's always fun, fun to see happen. Our media recognitions come in the form of outside entities recognizing our employees, and they can come from media, Gannett, for example, or from private entities that publicize their honorees. That may include various professional organizations via media releases, such as state organizations who name one of our employees as their Teacher of the Year, or whatever the case may be. Or HCA Ocala, for example, with their Recognize a Teacher program that Megan will share more about in a minute. And then you, as school board members, also help us recognize employees on a regular basis. Your recognitions, both individually, meaning like school audits, for example, and collectively, for years of service or other large-scale recognitions, share the appreciation that we all have for employees doing more than just a good job. Moving on, our annual Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year recognitions shine the spotlight on school leaders making the biggest impact in their respective communities. These top-notch professionals move on to state-level competition, just like our Golden Apple teachers do for Florida's Teacher of the Year honors. And finally, on this screen, as I mentioned, a new partnership with HCA Ocala, thanks to a community-nominated teacher each month, with personal congratulations and food. And Megan will share more about that in just a moment. Continuing on, additional tools that we use to enhance communication with and recognition of our employees include the Events and Happenings Calendar. That is an internal-facing calendar accessible to school administrators and their secretaries, along with district leaders and their secretaries, and you, I believe, also have access to view that. As you requested, we have added your generally scheduled school board meetings and work sessions to this calendar to reduce and hopefully avoid conflicts with school-based events. As previously mentioned, recognizing our employees for their years of service and celebrating that success now comes with school board recognition and a special breakfast event compliments of the Public Education Foundation. These efforts share the importance of appreciating individuals for their contributions to student success, including often people who work behind the scenes. The superintendent's weekly wrap-up is generally a three-to-five-minute video recorded in the field and covering a particular topic of Dr. Gullett's choosing, supported with B-roll video and occasional on-camera guests. Each episode is shared via email link with all employees, promoted in various district-based efforts, and shared on social media for our entire community to enjoy. Weekly views generally run between five hundred to a thousand, so while not viral in some terms, these videos still share important information and perspective with lots of people each week. Episodes are produced during the regular calendar school year. Next up, our MCPS Highlights Newsletter shares at-the-district level each week and includes general updates about elementary and secondary curriculum, the latest news and school accomplishments, transportation statistics and information, and vacancy numbers for that week, among other information. These efforts present the same information to multiple audience members, so everyone has the same facts and the latest information when it comes to district highlights. Finally, we are working on a formalized internal communications plan to better guide us in crisis situations, realizing this will be a living document once developed and documented. And before I ask Megan to come back up, I just want to remind everyone that while we may be the PR team and other members of Ms. Harris's departments, communication is on all of us. We are all part of the team. We are all ambassadors for our district. So while we may talk about certain tools and other channels that we use, sharing information with those we know face-to-face and other personal contact methods, invaluable. So I appreciate all that you all do to help us successfully communicate with our audiences.
Again, Mr. Christian, continuing with Strategy Five D, specifically the recognition of employees' contributions, I will begin with reviewing the Foundation's Golden Apple Program, which recognizes outstanding educators in our district, starting from the school level with our School-Based Teachers of the Year and Rookies of the Year, who then submit teacher portfolios, participate in interviews, and classroom observations for then a new Golden Apple class to be selected. Two Saturdays from now, we hope to see all of our school board members there, in person or in spirit, as we will be celebrating all of the teachers in our district and announcing Marion County's Teacher of the Year. But the Golden Apple Program itself does not end after the beautiful gala. In fact, for our golden apples, it's just the beginning of what it means to truly be a part of the Golden Apple Academy. They contribute to elevating teachers, promoting positivity among their peers, and they roll up their sleeves for everything and anything to help our foundation serve our mission. The Academy hosts breakfast with our superintendent. They volunteer to help host the Foundation's annual Pop and Drop Teacher Event, which serves a thousand or more teachers each year. They serve as panelists and presenters for new teacher orientation and professional development and leadership and learning sessions. They volunteer at our Tools for Teaching store and serve on many committees, but two new initiatives that came from our very own Golden Apple Program this year. The first is called Apps, Apple Paper Scissors. Modeled after the Ed Camp concept, this event was organized by teachers for teachers in a non-traditional professional development format. The second initiative, as Mr. Kevin Christian spoke to, is the Thank a Teacher Program. It's a partnership in thanks to HCA Florida-Ocala, where every month, a teacher is selected from community-wide nominations. He or she is recognized and surprised at their school. Not only do they receive recognition and some gifts, but their entire campus is able to celebrate and receive support, whether it's breakfast, lunch, or treats. The Foundation also recognizes the contributions of the incredible non-instructional staff of the district through our School-Related Employee of the Year program. Through nominations, non-instructional employees are recognized, with one being named the district's School-Related Employee of the Year. Last year, Mr. Edward Lanza, named Marion County's School-Related Employee of the Year, would then become the State of Florida's School-Related Employee of the Year. This year, Ms. Francesca Jimenez from Liberty Middle School has been named, and she will continue on to compete at the state level. Through the Foundation's Teacher-to-Be Scholarship Program, we recognize the commitment of district employees who have chosen to continue their education, to work towards completing their education, and become a classroom teacher. They are committed to staying in our district, and we are committed to the path that they have chosen. This past fall, we awarded six additional district employees with the scholarship opportunity, valued at up to twenty-five hundred dollars for each of them. It is incredible when you attend great beginnings or a new teacher orientation event, and teachers come up to you and say, "Thank you, I am now teaching in our district because of the Foundation's Teacher-to-Be Scholarship." In fact, last year's District Rookie of the Year and this year's District Rookie of the Year became teachers in our district through our Teacher-to-Be program. And then recognizing employee contributions, but at the other end of their career, the Foundation hosts Retirement Celebration. Between the start of a career in our district, all the way to retirement, there are many touchpoints where community engagement and partnerships through our foundation provides the resources, support, and the opportunities to be recognized and celebrated. And while these touchpoints might vary greatly, maybe partnership with Advent Health to provide words of encouragement and support to principals during a principal meeting, maybe it's the district secretary spending the last two days at the Foundation, to the grand-scale level of partnerships, like the gala, where we will elevate teacher recognition and have a red carpet affair. But recognizing employee contributions can also be as simple as the teacher note cards that now sit in the nook at the Foundation office, where teachers can visit, take a note, read words of encouragement, and it may just be the exact words that he or she needs to read to say, "Wow, I can keep going. I matter, I am valued, I'm going to show up for my students tomorrow." In closing, I call your attention to the bottom-left picture on my final slide. The Foundation created and shared this post on social media as our district prepared for Hurricane Milton, and our schools were serving as shelters. Our team of Foundation staff and board members gathered to make shelter baskets to then deliver out with this very important message. Not all heroes wear capes, some wear MCPS badges. Your Public Education Foundation believes in recognizing the heroes we have right here in our district every day. Thank you.
I feel like I should applaud.
I know.
That was great.
Well said, Ms. Megan Mall, thank you. And I want to comment on the nook. I know it seems pretty simple to probably those who are watching, but I've been there, as you know, a couple times when I was meeting with a group of teachers, several groups of teachers over the last week, and that space is inspiring and just lets everyone know how important they are, that we appreciate our employees. And so, thank you all for what you've shared. On board, as you can see, I mean, I think we are living amongst many heroes that are doing the work day-to-day for our students, and really appreciate and am proud of our employees. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Board, I'll open it up to you.
Yes. I'll start, since I was ready to applaud anyway. I just wanted to thank all of you for a tremendously inspiring, positive, and uplifting presentation. There is so much good happening in this district, and that only happens when the whole team pulls together. And I see the continuing growth of that can-do type culture in this district, which is really refreshing to me, because we've been through a lot as a district, as most districts have. I mean, public education is very challenging these days. And I think that it is up to us as leaders to continue to inspire, to continue to cultivate and model that can-do spirit. So there's a lot of little things that I wrote down as I continued to listen to your presentation, and a couple of touchpoints for me. Obviously, we're, you know, we're all ambassadors for our school system, and especially for our students. And sometimes I think, as leaders, we forget the impact that we really have. It's almost, I don't know, humbling and embarrassing at the same time. You know, the people put so much weight into what we say and how we say it. And I certainly take that responsibility very seriously. I loved hearing about the Behavioral Mental Health Technician, I think it was, new program that's going to be expanding to other high schools. That comes directly from our student board representatives. It was something that we knew, but they articulated, and so that's awesome. The social media, like it or not, that's the arena. And you can feel like a gladiator sometimes. But again, if we continue to project the positive message, not shying away from the issues that we have, of course, but setting the standard, we're going to win it. And I heard several things, surveys, marketing, social media, and all I could think of was one of our partners, Kia. Because I happen to have a Kia, I've had several Kias. And talk about the private sector and communication. I get a survey, you know, "How was your oil change, you know, do you need a new car?" And so, those are the kinds of things that we can emulate as well, that the private sector has always done well, and for some reason, I don't know, the public education has, you know, we use that term, told our story, as well as we could have all along. And I see an acceleration in this, and that's just going to contribute to our faster improvement. So that was great. Let me just see if there was anything else quick. The community partnerships that have been built, big and small, is also very incredible. Obviously, the Ocala Horse Alliance is close to my heart. I'm waiting for the email from L.A. Truman about the thirty-five hundred books that need to be labeled and packaged and everything else. And our district pitches in and helps make sure that those books get to all of the elementary schools. So hats off to all of you and everyone in the community that is seeing the positive things that we're doing and continuing to build on the positive momentum that you have helped create. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
Sure, why not? We'll just go down the line. So, Board, you know, this is the goal that I'm most passionate about, and they all know it as well. Was grateful to be a part of this team when we were working on-
when we were working on updating some of the goals. Couple of things I wanted to take note of. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the annual family survey that is currently going on right now. Completed it as a parent this week. And I'm not certain if some of the questions have changed, but I love the way they were worded. It felt like we were asking for some of the things that we're hoping to actually be able to measure. And so, I'm looking forward to the responses. And if anybody's listening out there that is a parent, please go, you can even find it on the slider on the website. I just wanted to make sure it was there and saw that it is. So, you should've gotten email, and there's social media posts about, there's lots of things about the annual family survey, but please complete that because it only will help us continue to enhance as what Ms. Thrower was saying, that we're accelerating, and we are doing things a lot more. And the survey will help validate that as well as give us additional ideas where we can continually improve. Also grateful to hear about the Internal Crisis Communication Plan that's underway, and grateful that we're moving forward in that. I know that's something that has been on the radar for a while, and so grateful that that is moving forward. Also grateful hearing the words alumni after Leadership MCPS. So, I know I mentioned that in the work session, I think our last work session. So, I'll be interested to see what that looks like and how that's gonna evolve. I think they would make great ambassadors and a great advocacy committee, and how we as board members can participate with them. I think that will be really, really powerful. Also grateful to continue to see expanded partnerships and new opportunities that we have. I continue to think, and as we talked about in our committee, and I'll say it again publicly, that there is an additional element that I know is gonna take a full-time staff person to get there with really, really enhancing partners in education, where we can be... So, I'll give you an example, board. Yesterday, when we were touring the bus garage, and they were talking about the car wash area, or the bus wash area. And my mind immediately went to, "That feels like a sponsorship opportunity." Because they're having struggles with the facility, with the cost of the capital, and what would that look like? And how would we... Those are the kinds of things I'm talking about. That would be something no one's talking about, something no one's thinking about. But whenever we're continuing to expand opportunities for capital money, having someone dedicated to be seeking out those unique partnerships, similar to the Jenkins Auto Group one that worked out several years ago with the Teacher of the Year getting a car, a three-year lease on a car every year. There are so many more opportunities like that. And as we're continuing to build schools and build new places where people's names could be on them, having people, a person, not people, having a person dedicated to that. Because I know how intense that could be and that relationship building, how long that can take. Would not want to tax Ms. Magamal's staff at their current staffing capacity with that. So, I would be in support of it, being a district person or a foundation person. Foundation board, hear my words. But I know that's still something that I hope to see us, as a district, continue to pursue. But thank you for your wonderful presentation. And I didn't have to ask questions of Kevin that he knew the answers to, or he knew I was gonna ask anyway. Thank you.
Yes. Just because it's timely, I just wanted to piggyback on something that Board Member Campbell shared, and it is about the bus wash station at the main compound. I was speaking about that yesterday with Ms. Rostonic. And it really wasn't, I said it sort of as a joke, but I said, "It's really not a joke." Because we all joke about how many car washes are being built in town. And maybe Race Wash would sponsor a bus wash. Because who doesn't like to see a nice, gleaming, clean bus? You know, it just makes you think that, hey, you know, we're looking good. So, I think that's a great opportunity. And it's just so funny, the different aspects of our job. Let's talk about car washes.
Okay. So, that's all right. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Thrower, Reverend Cummings.
Listen, thank you for the presentation. You guys are doing a great job in the collaboration with our community, as well as the communication piece. I think communication is necessary and vital to us having success. I'm not gonna talk a long time like my colleagues did because we got a long day. So, thank y'all.
We just said it all already. Dr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for mentioning the family survey. I must have missed that Sky Alert. So, I do see it on the website, but maybe if we could do another round, or I don't know when it expires, the family survey?
That's out of our Title I department. We have been working with them, but we'll certainly touch base with them and see if they would like us to do another opportunity, another round.
Well, this board member would like you to do another one because I missed it. I didn't know it was happening. And I feel like I'm rather involved, so...
Well, I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but that's actually, I guess I received it because I have a student in a Title I school, and your students are not in a Title I school. So, that wouldn't actually make sense because the information came from the assistant principal of the school.
Okay, yeah, I'm like, there's no, I don't miss stuff. So, are all families supposed to complete the survey? Because my child's school, I just looked, and I'm very satisfied.
I can't answer that question because the survey doesn't come from my department.
Well, what I will say is this, the survey does have my child's school on it. And my child's school is not a Title I school, which would make sense why I didn't receive the communication. But if all schools are intended to complete the survey, then all schools need to receive the communication via Sky Alert. That would be my request as a board member. If we're going to collect responses from all schools, then certainly they need to know about it. Speaking of surveys, do all surveys live in this land? So, surveys on, like the surveys for our administrators' performance, does that come from this land?
That does not come through this land.
Okay.
It comes through that land, your land. No, I'm just kidding.
My land is your land.
There's a song in every sentence that you speak.
Yes.
I believe that that survey comes through Human Resources, and that's where those... I hesitated to use the word evaluation, but for lack of a better word right now, Human Resources owns that land.
Understood. Okay, so that would've been a different goal. I wanted to just note, I'm still looking for an adjustment to how we do administrative surveys. So, understanding it's not appropriate for the nature of the conversation today, but I would like the board at some point to have continued conversation about it because I've asked for us to have expanded administrative evaluations, and I haven't seen that happen yet. The, I wanted to note, Ms. Magamal mentioned that we've had a significant increase in the partnerships. And there's one particular donor whose significant contribution to the North End has made that happen. And I will not mention his name, but I think it is important to acknowledge that this one individual has shown passion and commitment to every school that lies in my district. And we have created such a strong partnership. And I do think that we're going to continue to see some continued improvements on the North End. And it's all because of one individual and his commitment to the public education system in Marion County, specifically on the North End. And so, I'm grateful for that partnership we've been able to create. And then, finally, internal communication within our organization. Is that also shared under this goal? Or is that goal separate from what's happening here? Because I know that we talked a lot about external communication, so communication with our stakeholders. But I didn't see a lot of information in here about internal communication among ourselves.
Yes, ma'am, that is Strategy Five, I think it's C. Strategy Five D, yes, ma'am.
Five what?
Five D is in Delta. I don't have a slide number.
Okay, yes, so that's Slide 18. So, that wasn't, I guess, what I was looking for then. So, what I'm speaking towards is our communication and the ways we effectively or not effectively communicate within our organization about things that are occurring, things that are forthcoming, changes that are occurring. Where, how are we, is there a metric to... Do you know what word I'm looking for? Is there a metric to quantify that type of communication?
Short of surveying our employees specifically to ask them how satisfied they are with internal communications. And we would have to define that because internal depends on the audience that you're part of.
Correct.
Internal at a school is different than internal at the district, or vice versa.
This board member would be very excited about a survey that talks about that and understands how each school, because every school community is different, how each school's internal communication is going, seeing as we have an entire goal on communication. What is the internal communication at schools? How does it vary between elementary and secondary? What is the internal communication in the central office? And that communication from central office to schools?
I think some of that is covered under the parent survey that was previously mentioned. Because some of those questions do target school communications.
Absolutely, but that is still with an external stakeholder. That's not with an internal stakeholder.
I would beg to differ.
Well, I just took the survey, and it was...
Well, I mean, parents...
Right, are a target audience.
Sure, but they are not, what I'm talking about is internal communication within our organization, employee to employee.
Oh, so you're just talking employee to employee?
Yes. Yes, our employee internal communication in our organization. Oftentimes, things come up, and I know I'm not unique in this. Things come up, and, I mean, this morning is an example of it, right? And so, things come up, and Person A and Person B, and maybe Person C, no one has communicated about what we're doing. And so, we find ourselves in a situation where communication is the crux of why we failed to know where we were supposed to be that day or how we were supposed to navigate the conversation or be best prepared. And so, I would like to see some metrics attached to the internal communication within our organization with our employees. At sites, like how do employees at a site feel their leader is communicating with them? Which may be represented in their administrative survey.
Part of the site survey.
But there is no survey from the district office and how employees feel the central office is communicating with them. How then, the central office leaders, how their departments feel they're communicating with them. All of those other surveys are not captured, to my knowledge. And so, we have no metric to reflect on as to how our internal communication is working.
You really noted.
Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Thanks. I have a suggestion regarding this topic. And I would offer that we lead it and start with ourselves.
Sure.
And then, you know, add it as a work session topic and save what we wanna see, and lead it and model it.
I agree, Chair. If we could have that as an upcoming work session topic, so that way, we would be able to let Dr. Gullett and her staff know exactly the questions that we're interested in having asked, and how we want them cross-referenced from site to district, district back to site. If it's department-based, if we want specific information about specific departments, schools feeling communication from some departments better than others, those that they engage with the most.
Absolutely. I've been asking for it since I became a board member. I think that that's a piece of this communication puzzle that's been missing.
Agreed.
And so, satisfaction or lack of satisfaction, there's no metric to quantify that. And so, we've just been going on feelings, and feelings are not the best metric to use. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that robust conversation. I wanna thank you all for your presentation this morning. Communication is, I'm not an expert, but because I came straight from the classroom, it, one of my first meetings with Dr. Gullett, it was definitely a high priority for me. And so, if we're not telling our story, somebody else is. And so, I am excited to see specifically our Facebook communication picking up because I noticed that that's where our families are engaged the most. That's where they tend to interact with us the most consistently. Didn't say it was all positive, Ms. Thrower. I just said, "That's where they tend to communicate." So, I am, I know you mentioned that, I'm not sure the term that you used, but that each school is connected with you for their Facebook page. Is that correct? Okay, so, a while ago, and I don't think it was the appropriate time because I don't think we were in the same space that we are now, but this board member would like a list, if possible, of each of our Facebook pages. Because I do try to engage and share with the activities that are going on at school. And I know that that's a little challenging because particularly our high schools have many accounts. You know, their athletics have an account, their ag department has an account. And so, I would just be interested so I can look those up and be involved and help sharing that message, so...
And the school pages still have social media. If it's not under us, it just, they're not under our protection.
Okay.
So, we can still, I mean, that's what I'm, under what I'm doing right now, just trying to get everyone under our management. But otherwise, it's still the school's administrators.
Okay.
You just have to make sure it's the right page, so...
Getting the right page is tricky because you go in, or I have gone in and searched, and it is difficult to find what you're looking for. So, I would appreciate any guidance you can give me on getting connected with schools across the district. All right, thank you very much.
I did think of one other thing.
Yes, go ahead.
We all know, we have a very active parent Facebook page in Marion County with a lot of individuals. Is our district Facebook presence a member of that Facebook group?
I believe you can see it, but we don't post or anything.
Understood. But what I would love to see is us commenting with district data. So, whether that's a district Facebook post that shared information about a school closure, or maybe a link to our website, which indicates our Fast Facts or our, what do you call those, the misnomers? We have a page where we have our, what do you know I'm trying to say? River Control page, right? And so, I would love to see us not engage in discourse, but simply comment to say, "Hey, those looking for school..." The calendar comes up every day in that group, right? And honestly, one member of our community, Jamie Nieswenger, I feel like more often than not, does a very good job of providing accurate information. But I would love to see the district post the information. So, from our seat, we say, "Here's the link to the 24/25 calendar," or "Here's the link to the 25/26 calendar." So that we are providing accurate information to the parent directly instead of potentially them receiving misinformation. And so, not to engage in discourse about feelings, but simply to share information. That would be what I would love to see. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, but that's certainly something I would like to see.
I would love to see it, but I'd like to acknowledge that's very tricky. You know, not to engage in any of the negativity, which I personally find is a lot, but to just go in and basically post a link to the correct information or repost something that's, you know, Kevin, you've shared on our page. I just, I wanna acknowledge that I understand that is a tricky place to be. Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Right. I can see tremendous value. I think that there are plenty of people that work for the district that are members of the site that was just mentioned that see the wildly inaccurate information being posted, including by the person who was just specifically named. So, we do need a counter to that. And coming, having it come from the district is, in my opinion, better than coming from random people in the district. And to put something simple like a link to see Marion County website to help, I was thinking about this last night when I was reviewing this, how to keep driving people to our Facebook page where the accurate information is being shared. Now, I will offer that probably most of them know that there's a Marion County Facebook page. And there is a level of love for engaging in toxicity across social media. There just is. There just is. So, I think we just need to accept that and continue to rise above that and do our level best to say, hey, you know, point you in the right direction here. And, you know, whatever the topic is, but carefully. And I, my suggestion would be doing it, using, linking back to us all the time. See this, see this, see this for more information on this topic. Because we know there's plenty of us that are looking at it anyway.
And I, I just may offer, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned Fordham's early learning page. It is very productive. And so, maybe the answer is not us tagging into that page. Maybe we have a page that is interactive, that we can monitor. You know, we have the ability to delete misinformation and, but it's a place where parents can converse and ask questions. But we, we are in charge of what's being shared.
Just as a response, that is the purpose of our district Facebook page. We would never delete a post unless it used obscenity or identified a student because every post made to every social media account that the district participates in is a public record.
Okay.
So, we would not delete it. We would take it down, but it would still be in our archive.
Okay. So, sorry, wrong lingo on that, but-
And, and I appreciate the discussion about sharing information on that particular web, webpage. There could be merit to that. I have grave concerns with it, but we'll certainly discuss it. Could be merit to it, absolutely, but I have a lot of concerns.
Yeah, and maybe it's a trial. Maybe you try it out and see how it goes. I don't know. Yes, Board Member Campbell.
Personally, this board member is not in favor of the district directly engaging in that page. The existence of that page with thousands of people already on it predated the district's Facebook page. Now that we have our own, the way we combat the negative that happens on that is to post on our own page the accurate information. And then, if any one of us or anyone else chose to share the post from the official page into the parent page, that's the way we handle that. But I am not, and, I mean, certainly, y'all can decide what you want to do in the executive cabinet, but I am not in favor of Marion County Public Schools commenting directly to anything unless Marion County Public Schools is specifically tagged and there is a justification similarly to the way we are tagged sometimes as individual board members and then we may comment. I don't comment on anything unless somebody has engaged with me in there and I am not in favor of that at all. So, that's my personal opinion. Make it or leave it.
Okay, anything else, Board? Alright, thank you again for your very informative presentation. We appreciate all of you. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Dr. Gullett, I think we're ready to go on to our next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like to bring forward Cynthia Barnes, who is representing the Office of Safe Schools today. And she has an update for you regarding inspections. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Good morning. To each one of you, Chair Conrad, vice chair Cummins. I got to speak up so you can hear me a little louder.
Yes. Thank you, Cynthia.
The other members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Gullett.
The quarterly compliance inspection report. In response to Florida State Statute 1001.212, the Department of Education's Office of Safe Schools developed and adopted a Florida Safe School Compliance Inspection Report to document compliance or non-compliance with school safety requirements mandated by law or rule and adherence to established school safety best practices to evaluate the safety, security, and emergency response of the schools. The Office of Safe Schools conducts unannounced inspections of all public and charter schools while school is in session and investigates reports of non-compliance with school safety requirements. Thereafter, the Office of Safe Schools provide quarterly reports to each district's school superintendent and school, school safety specialists identifying the number and percentage of schools, including charter schools, that were inspected or re-inspected during that quarter and the number and percentage of inspected schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies. To maintain the safety and security of the district, the report provided by the state does not contain detailed information. The Office of Safe Schools reported the following for the quarterly report. For the District of Marion County, the number of schools inspected or re-inspected is 12. Percentage of schools inspected or re-inspected is 22.22. The number of inspected schools with no safety requirement deficiencies, 5. Percentage of inspected schools with no school safety requirement deficiencies is 41.67. This concludes the compliance inspection quarterly report. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, Board, I'm going to offer comments, but we have, do have to be careful about our questioning and, and our comments, so leave that there.
Will we be individually briefed or receive a executive session on shade session on those that-
Yes, the answer is that you will be briefed on this, whether, whether that occurs individually or via shade session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. We appreciate you waiting and presenting for us this morning. Thank you. Alright, Dr. Gullett, that takes us, oh, excuse me, any public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Dr. Gullett, that takes us to our last item on the rezoning update.
There we go. Good morning again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it certainly does. Mr. Ayers is coming forward and he is going to provide rezoning information for you, for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you. I have, as promised, the paper maps.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau.
I have mine from my meeting, so I-
I have mine from my meeting too.
Yep, Attorney Powers. Do you need one, Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
I have one, we all have one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Pastor Co-chair, board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez. Today, I'm presenting rezoning information for the 25-26 school year. As a review, there are three types of rezoning. Technical, targeted, and relief. Technical rezoning is used to correct mapping errors. It is located in uninhabited areas and no students are impacted. Targeted rezoning alleviates localized overcrowding and a limited number of students are affected. Relief rezoning is used to alleviate widespread overcrowding. It involves opening new schools, which impacts a large number of students. Projections are developed using the growth rate of school zones calculated using a combination of Power School's predictive analytics and historical student enrollment rates. The capacity of schools is determined by the Florida Inventory Schoolhouse, FISH seats, which are determined by the Florida Department of Education. FISH seats are adjusted annually as new classroom wings are added and portable classrooms are changed. The utilization percentage of schools is determined by comparing student population and available FISH seats. Three targeted rezoning options will be presented. Shady Hollow Area rezoning for elementary, Liberty Howard rezoning for middle, and the former Evergreen Elementary Auxiliary Zones. This slide shows the map of the Shady Hollow area south of the existing walk zone for Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary. There are currently 17 students, elementary students in the rezoned area, which is zoned for Saddlewood Elementary. Targeted rezoning is recommended for the Shady Hollow area elementary students. The next steps are listed on this slide. A community meeting was held on September 11th, 2024 at the Shady Hollow Community Center. Day's work session is a rule development meeting and a rule-making public hearing and vote will be scheduled for February 25th if we have consensus. If the Board approves the rezoning during the February 25th meeting, it will be effective for the 25-26 school year. Before I move on, I want to ask if there's any questions on this area.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. That's what I, you read my mind. That's what I was thinking also. Board, do we have any questions or comments you want to share on this particular section?
I'll, I'll share. Myself and Reverend Cummings, I know, attended the community meeting back in the fall. I think it was in September. And I, I felt overwhelmingly that the families who came to the community meeting desired for their students to be able to attend N.H. Jones. They shared concerns about transportation, which probably has improved since the start of the school year. But they did share concerns about transportation and then they divulged maybe that they're not always safely transporting their children because they're putting them all in one vehicle and kind of just trying to get them to school if the bus is late. And so, this is in the best interest of those students, I do believe. I do think Reverend Cummings maybe can share a little bit about the walking and the pattern there because that was discussed. But I'm certainly in support of this change. I think it's necessary and appropriate and in the best interest of the students.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Yes, that was in September when we went over to the community meeting. And it was very, to me, it was a very productive meeting because there's a desire for those parents to have their kids to be able to go to that school, Mr. Ayers. And the concern initially was the route of how they would get to school for that. I think there has to be some collaboration with city officials and those property owners on the path that they'll get to school. I think it's a no-brainer, this one's a no-brainer to me, that these kids are right, basically right around the corner across the field from a school that, and, and I think these kids would be very, very successful there. I don't, I don't believe these are, these are level one or level, lower level type kids. These are kids that can function well at Dr. N.H. Jones, so we want to make sure they get there, get there, get to that school.
And I, I believe, and I don't want to speak for you, Reverend Cummings, but my understanding is we've already kind of had preliminary conversations with some city council members to productively and collaboratively make sure that these children have a walk path that's appropriate. Talking with OPD if necessary to make sure that the-
There's a safe path.
A safe path. And so, I certainly will be a collaborative team member to make sure that we have those conversations and, and ensure that students are, and the parents share too. They would drop them off. I mean, yes, it's in the walk zone, but they're already, at least in the, in the fall, they were sharing, they were basically already driving them to Saddlewood anyways and N.H. Jones is closer. So, they wouldn't be against just throwing them in the vehicle and driving them to N.H. Jones.
Right. I mean, it's less than a mile. It's really less than a mile walk, so.
I'll just start by saying on behalf of transportation, transportation has definitely improved. Anything we continue, can continue to do for the health, safety, and welfare of our students to get them walking and biking to school safely. I am 100% for. I think it reduces frisky behaviors when you really need them to be focused. It gives them a chance to, you know, get some exercise to and from school. I love the downtown Ocala's vision of making everywhere more walkable and, and safer. My only, and, and Mr. Ayers, you know this from our, our conversation in our briefing. For me, it is about provide, making sure that the parents feel like that it is safe. And not just safe, but encouraging, you know? Let's build some trails, whatever it takes, not let's, because that's something they would do, but, but you see my point. It's all part of growing our, our city in a way that matches their vision, I think. So, I mentioned crossing guards and, and appropriate lighting too, if they're crossing any streets. You know, that's a topic for another portion of this. But I, I definitely agree with it and with a few caveats.
I also agree it's the right decision.
That's the shortest I've heard you speak.
So, hearing the board consensus, we will move forward with a rule-making public hearing that's currently scheduled for February 25th at this time.
Yes, and Mr. Ayers, before you go ahead, I, I shared this concern yesterday, but I just do want to say it publicly. As far as getting those students do it to N.H. Jones, it is important to me on the educational end that we look at each of those, I think it's 17 students, that there's, if there's any needs that they are, services that they are providing at their, at Saddlewood currently, that we are prepared and ready to serve them when they show up at N.H. Jones at the beginning of August. Because we have a list of their needs. And I know, we talked about this yesterday, and that's not something, he couldn't get that information for me today, that we are not dragging our feet on getting what those students need on that campus. Okay, thank you very much.
And, and the other thing that, that always bothers me when we do these types of rezonings, there's a tendency, and I don't know if it's who, who, who does this, that we start labeling these kids that come out of the community, going to these schools, they start calling them neighborhood kids. We do not need that type of rhetoric with these kids. They're just kids that are going to a school that, that's right across the field from their house. So, I'm praying that, and I'm not saying that's going to happen at Dr. N.H. Jones, but it's happened at other schools. We, that's something that just can't be tolerated, so.
No, and, and Reverend Cummings, I hope you did not take my statement as such. Because I just want to clarify, when there was a move, I'm going to tell a little story here. When we shifted students before, you have to understand that each school receives different levels of training. And so, my ask is, you know, at the school level, that we are, wherever a student is moved, if they're moved to Saddlewood or they're moved to East Marion, wherever they are moved, we have a responsibility to make sure that, that the staff and the teachers and the administrators that are at that school have what they need to meet the need of the students that are coming to them. And that doesn't mean in the third nine weeks.
Right.
It means when they show up on the first day of school that we're ready to serve them.
Well, and if I could add, I mean, I know that it's not always appropriate, but 17 students, that should be, I mean, as intimate as a transition meeting like in an IEP. You know, 17 students is a small enough of students that there's no reason why the principal of Saddlewood and the principal at N.H. Jones, along with some support staff, can't sit down and go through each individual child. Talk about, on, on the school side, you would talk about their pink or blue card, right? So, you would talk about what are some unique strengths, unique weaknesses? What are some ways so that we can best help that child acclimate? So, seven, you know, you can't do that if it's hundreds of students.
Right.
And we're going to talk about hundreds of students today, but for 17 students, it's, that, that should be well within the scope of what those two schools can do to assimilate the students.
Yes, and if our goal is that every student succeeds, we need to be proactive and not reactive.
And Madam Chair, by no means that I, you just, you just kind of triggered something in my head that made me think about that. Because in, in times past, whenever we kind of did some, certain things, and, and again, I don't know how it starts or, but they, when the kids come, they start, they're, they're, they're not ready, and then they group these kids into a label and call them neighborhood kids. All of them are neighborhood kids. Hey, we used to all have neighborhood schools, so. I, I just don't like that label. And, and I'll go to certain schools and I hear that label, those are the neighborhood kids. What does that mean? You know, because of where the schools, the neighborhood that the school's in, what? I don't, I just don't like that phrase, so.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Thoreau.
Yes, you definitely pushed a button for me. It's undoing decades of mindset and, and culture. And in the behavior world, you know, it's all about planned transition. Waiting, hoping that they're going to do okay, or worst statement ever, let's see how they do.
Yeah.
No, we need to be better than that. And as mentioned earlier about my suggestion that we lead, you know, strengthening internal communication between schools. It doesn't matter if it's one kid or 100 kids. You know, you can find those commonalities. And, and especially when students are leaving middle school or elementary school, maybe had a tough time, there's always this tendency, you know, oh, well, he's, he's yours now. How many times have we heard that?
Yes, we've heard it.
And, and I know we can be better. So, to me, this is just another example of leading from the front. Planned transitions, let's look at strengthening that internal communication between schools. And I'm reminded at North Marion Middle School years ago, the, the guidance counselor didn't come back until well into the summer. And they walk in and there's these stacks of cum folders. Well, how are you going to go through all those stacks? And these were just kids with IEPs, you know, and truly be planned, truly be ready to receive those students with a wide smile and feeling confident that- to receive those students with a wide smile and feeling confident that at least you're going to get through the first day pretty well and set a good tone. So, thank you, Board Member Cummings. I don't know that we can't, that we can say that enough of what you just said.
All right, Mr. Ayers, thank you for the leeway there, I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
You're doing good.
That's it, you're rolling.
The next targeted rezoning is a Liberty Howard Middle rezoning. This slide shows the current enrollment data and utilization percentages for Liberty Middle and Howard Middle Schools. Please note that this slide also reflects an increase in fish seats at Liberty Middle School when the new 16 classroom wing opens in August 2025. This slide also shows the projected enrollment and utilization through the 27, 28 school year. This slide shows the potential zone change that would move students from Liberty Middle to Howard Middle School. The map shows two areas identified as Liberty Zone A and Liberty Zone B. There are currently 163 as-zoned middle school students in these zones. The chart on this slide shows the projected enrollment and utilization percentages of Liberty and Howard Middle School after the potential rezoning. Please note that the enrollment and utilization percentages for Liberty Middle School do not take into account that Liberty Middle will be open for controlled open enrollment after the potential rezoning. Targeted rezoning is recommended for the Liberty Howard Middle rezoning area. If we have consensus from the board, the next step will include scheduling community and stakeholder input meetings in February, a rule development work session in March during which community and stakeholder input would be presented. If there's consensus to move forward after that work session, a rulemaking public hearing and vote will be scheduled for April. If the board approves the rezoning in April, the rezoning will be affected for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers, we'll open it up to conversation and comment, Board.
I don't mind starting because I think this stemmed from the community meeting we attended in September. So we were there for the rezoning of Shady, of Saddlewood to NH Jones, and those parents said, well, what about Liberty? And I didn't even know what they were talking about. And so in conversation, they said, yeah, our kids get bused. And so I pulled up my map and they were busing almost seven miles from that particular community we were at to Liberty, and they were in walk distance of both Osceola and Howard. And so that's, I think where this stemmed from was our, our participation in that meeting and saying, hey, well, let's look at this because that seems like a transportation nightmare. And we're talking about trying to improve our on-time arrivals and we're doing such a good job in that, in that department. So why are we busing kids almost seven miles when they, we wouldn't even have to provide transportation for these students, they're in a walk zone? So I think this is a wonderful plan, I think this is more than necessary, and to me, this is setting Liberty up for future success because we understand that the growth is happening in Southwest, and so we are just providing more available seats at Liberty for the future. So I, I think that this is, I think this is a positive. So I'm on board for sure.
I concur. Only, the only thing I'm going to state with this is that there is a need for...
Crossing guards.
Crossing guards and the safety aspects of crossing across Highway 40. 40 and Martha King, that's the area that they would definitely need somewhere. There is a crossing guard at 27th and Martha King, but there needs to be one at 40.
To address that, once, after the day, after I have consensus, at the community meetings, I will be working with Safe Schools to show what that potentially would look like to, to address those concerns.
Thank you. Yes, Board Member Thrower?
Yes, and again, this comes as no surprise to you. I will reemphasize the need for, for safety and confidence from the families that it is a great idea for the kids to walk and, and ride their bikes and continue to have the outflow from the downtown community get the benefit of making things more walkable and bikable and, and safer. Highway 27 is no longer a country road, and yes, there's crossing guards there, but any of you that drive that during, during the school day when kids are on the move, there are no lights at that intersection, there's no big gridding. I know this has come to the huge attention and concern of one of our state reps. And as we continue to bring more students back, you know, to Howard, and Board Member Cummings remind me, you know, when we had that desegregation order, there was, I think that was part of the reason why we ended up with transportation zones like this. So again, it's just part of the cleanup of decades of dysfunction. And that doesn't happen overnight, but this is a huge, great step. But in our advocacy, Board Member Campbell, I believe when we go up to Tallahassee, we really need to talk about Highway 27.
Well, and I'll, I'll add, I, when I got on the board, I was campaigning on the corner, and I noticed the, just the fact that there was not a school zone on Highway 27 and that no one abides by the red light turning red. And so I started advocating with the DOT about my issues and concern, and basically they said, well, school zones aren't required because, on that road, and they gave me some, right? And so they, I, I asked, I took it up and they did a study, and then by the time I remembered that they were supposed to have told me about a study, that person no longer was with the DOT, and so it's been this round and round. And Rep. Hinson and I have had a conversation about it, and so I, because they do have a school zone on Highway 27 in Williston. So I know for a fact they will put a school zone on Highway 27 because they did it in Levy County. And so I am a full proponent of making that school zone not just on MLK, but also on Highway 27 and slowing down. I think it's because of the traffic light. The traffic light is the reason they won't do the school zone, because the traffic light slows down traffic and they're able to cross. But I, I, yeah, and so I would be a full proponent of doing whatever's necessary to advocate for a school zone getting on Highway 27. I, I've tried and I have hit roadblocks, but that traffic needs to slow down with the amount of students because they don't just cross one time. They cross, they chit chat, they cross back to go to the Jiffy Store, then they get, buy them a Coca-Cola, and then they cross again. Right, and, and as long as they're on time to school, that's what we care about. So I want to see a school zone on Highway 27, absolutely.
And I think we're all proponents of that, and I think that has to be something that we all bring forth in Tallahassee in a couple of weeks, that that section of Highway 27 from, I can't say where, but I guess by the auto parts store west to probably the next auto parts store, or to the Tesla place, needs to be some type of school zone because you have kids that are in that area.
Yep, Chair, thank you, yes.
My suggestion would be, and total agreement, let's unite our voices. We have a joint meeting coming up of elected officials, that could be something that could be added to the agenda. I think maybe even the technical working group, you know, let's, let's get this activated.
And it would be nice for, I, I know that the county, because it's not a county road, because I talked to Balkan, I talked to the sheriff, I talked to some county commissioners, they all basically said it's a DOT thing, it's not an us thing. And so if we can all unanimously, as Marion County elected officials, have a unanimous voice on it, then maybe we will be heard better. So certainly bringing it up in the joint meeting would be a great idea. Because nobody wants to own it, so.
Tell some thing tragic.
And that's what I said, does a kid have to...
And then the next day magically...
It will have a school zone, I know, and I don't think we should have to wait for a school, I mean, I'm working, trying to work on a four-way stop at East Marion, it's the same scenario. They're like, well, we don't, there's been no fatalities, and I'm like, oh, dear God, we have to wait on a, there are kids crossing over that ride their bike and there's no four-way stop, there's only a two-way stop at East Marion. And so those kids are like playing Frogger to cross because there's no crossing guard. And it's like, we have to wait for a fatality for a student to, and so they're doing a traffic study again, but, you know.
And then there's Bellevue.
Yeah, yeah, and so let's, shall we not digress? Because we could really just digress into a whole transportation conversation, yes.
Okay, Dr. Campbell, we haven't heard from you.
I agree with this rezoning recommendation. I also want to stress, as we continue to talk about walking and biking, they do have an extensive and very active car line, so there is also that option. We don't want to always say, if you're within that two miles, you absolutely have to walk or ride your bike. But families are certainly able to also transport their students if they'd like, but I agree with this recommendation.
All right, thank you very much, all right, Mr. Ayers.
So I just want to tie this one up, I'm hearing a consensus from the board that we're going to move forward with this.
On the first two, right? You're two for two so far.
The, the timeline on here is just potential right now, because obviously I've got rulemaking and development rules and dates that I have to follow, plus the community meetings that we have to schedule and go forward. So my goal is to have it done by April, but...
And, Ms. Ayers, going back to the communication piece from the strategic goal, please let us know so that we can, because you know we want to come to the community meetings to support.
And what is the dead stop for this rulemaking hearing to occur for us to have a change for August? Is there, is there a dead stop date that has to occur?
I, I, there's not a formal one, we would like to have it done by the end of May, just because there's lots of behind the scenes things that have to happen. And so there's no rule or thing like that. But my personal goal would be by the end of May, and I think we definitely can get that done.
Wonderful.
And that would be time enough to communicate everything to the, to those communities, thank you.
Because also, I'm sorry, but I just thought of this. When do our middle schools go to the elementary school feeders to do scheduling for middle school?
That's occurring now.
So in some way or form or fashion, we're going to need to capture these 100 and whatever children because Liberty is going to go to their zoned school and do scheduling to the fifth graders, and there will need to be some level of cooperation. Because also programmatically, there are slightly different programs at Howard than there are at Liberty. So just ensuring that, I, I mean, I, I don't know that it's appropriate to get ahead of final decisions, but if there was a way that Howard and Liberty could start having conversation, I don't know.
Those are occurring.
Okay.
Oh, perfect, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ayers, I think we're on to the next, next section.
The next targeted rezoning is the former Evergreen auxiliary zones. This targeted rezoning is not recommended for the 25, 26 school year. This targeted rezoning will be addressed for the 27, 28 school year after all former Evergreen students transition out of elementary school. If rezoning occurs before 2027, students will be placed in their third elementary school. This slide stated that they will be zoned for the third time, which is incorrect. They will be potentially attending their third elementary school.
Okay, Board? Yes, Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. Having been quite familiar with Evergreen since it's been in my district since I was elected in 2018, I, although I don't like it, I completely understand and I do support waiting on behalf of the kids. So that's where I am with it, short and sweet.
And I too, being very familiar with this process with Evergreen, and those kids have been shuffled and shuffled and shuffled. I think there needs to be some stability that we're giving them. I think waiting to their, to they've transitioned out of elementary school is the proper thing to do, so.
So if I may, in my conversation with Mr. Ayers, I asked some pretty data-driven questions because I wanted to understand, well, that's kind of how this language change from rezoning to placement occurred. But can you, can you share, what is the youngest grade a student is in that remains?
They're, they're currently in third grade.
So they're, they're, they have two more years of elementary school left, the youngest child.
Right.
And there's only 20 of them, correct?
There are, there are over 315 students currently in the zone, not, not counting fifth graders, and 19 of those are the former Evergreen students.
Right.
So 19, we're talking about 19 students?
Yes.
So I, and all of those 19, this would be their third placement?
If this, if we rezone them, it would be their third placement, yes.
Okay, so one of the things, because again, 19 is a very small number, it's a very different number than we talked about eight, you know, eight, 12 months ago. I would like to see personal conversations occur with the families. Because if those families would desire for their child to attend a school closer to home, because for some of these students, they are being picked up at 6:05 in the morning from their bus stop to get to Shady Hill. So I would like to see those families connected with and asked, hey, would you prefer your, your, I mean, we, we, we could see how they're close to school by proximity would be a different school. For instance, all of these students in the Spar Auxiliary Zone, which, could you help me understand then why there are so many dots if there are 19 students?
The dots, you know, the, the dots represent residences with students in them. It could be one student, it could be a K, it could be a thing, I, I shouldn't have put the dots on there, but the dots are, are, are helpful to show density, you know, where students are density from. But a dot on the map represents a residence with a student in it, and it could be a VPK through...
Well, and there must be more students because there's not, obviously not 300 and something dots on this paper, so, okay.
So we also include, this would include P3 students, you know, VPK students, which there are quite a few, but I did not include those in my count.
So two things that I would request, because I'm, I'm in agreement, I certainly would not want to choose that we change a child's placement a third time, especially when the number is just 19 students. When this came up, I was under the impression, based on the information we received last year, that we were in the hundreds of students. But what I would like to see is us reach out to those families and ask them if they would rather attend a school closer and, and provide that opportunity. So with transportation, because these families are being incredibly disservice by their students being picked up at 6 o'clock in the morning. They're standing on the side of the road, very dark, only because they're going to a school we told them they had to go to and they're driving past multiple schools otherwise. So if that family would desire to have a school closer to them, like Oakcrest or Anthony, then I would love to see us reach out and ask them that. And then the other component I have is when we are identifying students who live in this area for the next two years that are identified as pre-K ESE, we should be identifying them and supporting them by placing them in a school that is the closest to their residence, not the one they are zoned for. So we have families that are being identified that live in this area, and, and I, one particular case I know of, for sure, they live in the Shady Hill Auxiliary Zone. They were offered placement at Shady Hill for pre-K ESE, but Shady Hill, there's, it's not even close to their house. And so we need to, for these 19, which is probably not even 19 households, it's probably less than 19 maybe. And so I would like to see us have individual conversations with those 19 families and then pre, any of, any new pre-K ESE students who may be identified because they may not be in our system yet, and finding them a resource that is the closest to their address, not reflection of this auxiliary zone. So those are my two requests based on this, seeing as we're not going to move forward with a rezoning for the students.
That can be done.
So just for clarification again, this zone, the way we're looking at it right here, is only representative for those Evergreen elementary students. If there are any households in these areas...
They go to a different school.
No, no ma'am, those zones, if you live, if you move into that area, you go to that auxiliary zone school. That's why there's two, there's 315 approximate families, or students, elementary students that are in those zones.
Okay. And the reason these zones exist is because of Evergreen going away, I understand that. So at what point do you recommend, well, this is the greater question, Board. At what point are we having real conversation about North Side and consolidation of locations and rezoning the entire North Side?
I was going to have that conversation after we talk about the high school, but if we want to talk about it now...
Well, I mean, it, it is, it works with this conversation because these are the students that are also going to be impacted, potentially.
I'm ready to play ball whenever the Board wants to play ball about it, it's on my agenda for today, so.
Mine as well.
When would you like to have the conversation?
We can entertain it now.
All right. Board Member Campbell, you want to start?
Well, it, first of all, if we have 300, yeah, go ahead and have a seat, Mr. Ayers. I told you it was coming, you knew we were going to have this conversation.
So did I.
So we know we have 315 students that are being impacted that are not just these 19 students that were former Evergreen students, but as they move in, and we know there are developments also occurring in some of these areas that aren't necessarily marked here. This is a transportation challenge that we're continuing to... This is a transportation challenge. Then we're continuing to try to impact transportation in positive ways, however we can do that. So that's the first piece to this because some of the locations, again, they're passing by Oakcrest, just right there. And anyway, so that's one piece to this conversation because I think that it's imperative that we get real focused on what our real goal is there with all of that, all of those areas. But we have a school on the far northeast, northwest, sorry, northwest side of Marion County that has an exorbitant amount of seats available. And at some point, which I hope it's today, we start having real conversation about what that looks like from a consolidation standpoint. We fortunately have not been in the same situation that some of our school board colleagues around the state are having, where we are having reduced attendant, not attendance, reduced enrollment, thank you, reduced enrollment and needing to consolidate schools for that purpose. The justification, I believe, for consolidation, at least a conversation of consolidation, is because where our folks are moving is not necessarily into the areas in the north part of the county. So, and when we originally zoned these schools, the farmland preservation area did not exist. And in the county comprehensive plan, that's not going away. So as long as the farmland preservation area exists, we can understand that development will not occur on the grand scale that it's going to be occurring in the southwest part of our county, and I'm ready to have this conversation.
Chair, and if I can, I want to just go to the first, because you made me think of something that I've been trying to get my brain to grasp. So, Mr. Ayers, this is back to this Evergreen auxiliary zone. You said there are 19 students and their lowest grade is third grade. But I don't, if someone buys a home in this, the, the whole reason this came up, in all transparency, Board, is someone who is very important to me bought a home in an area, and in my brain, she was going to be zoned for Oakcrest. And then she was zoned for Shady Hill. And it was because she was just north of 35th Street on Gainesville Road. And so all of this happened, and so this family, you, you reminded me that if someone buys a home in this auxiliary zone tomorrow, the youngest, is really the youngest kid third grade? Because are all of the kids purely Evergreen rezoned kids?
No, no ma'am. So when we created the Evergreen auxiliary zones, we had dictation, we were dictated by DOE about we could only rezone those schools. And all students needed to be accounted for, not just students that attended Evergreen, but potentially could attend Evergreen for those years. So that's why those auxiliary zones were created, and they were specifically created for schools that met the criteria.
But we're making this decision based on what's best for these 19 students to not have a third placement. But in two years, more than likely statistically, there is going to be a student who has moved into this auxiliary zone and is not a rising sixth grader, and we will still be rezoning that child. So we are, we are, maybe not three times, but maybe, I mean, maybe that child lived on Southwest. I mean, we can't say for certain who's going to buy a home in this auxiliary zone. So my point is that we're never not going to have students. There, there's always going to be students in this auxiliary zone that are getting rezoned. So when you say there are 19 students, those are 19 of the purely Evergreen students?
Purely Evergreen students.
How many students are being, and so that is why I misunderstood that statement. And so Dr. Campbell, thank you for clarifying that, because I thought you were saying there was only 19 students in this exal- I know you said 315 live in, but only 19 are Evergreen rezoned students. But how many students are as attending would be rezoned? I think that's what I'm trying to ask.
And that's the 315 number.
As attending, or?
As attending, yes. Because that live in that zone that are attending those different schools. We took out the kids that are going to Jones and Madison Street on choice.
So there are 300 and-
15.
15 students as attending between the four schools.
Yes, yes ma'am.
And those numbers are the blue box numbers on Map D. So there are 124 students going to SPAR that as attending.
Well, I don't have that, I don't have that number broken out. The, the, the number 315 encompass all four zones.
Right. But there's a number in the SPAR box. And it's 124. There's a number in the Shady Hill shade, which is 147.
Yeah, that number's not accurate.
Yeah, those were the old numbers.
Those were numbers from a year ago that included fifth graders that have since rolled out.
Okay. So, well, I want to say this, because I'm ready to have this conversation, Dr. Campbell. And I think, based on my conversation with Mr. Ayers two days ago, what I will say is this. I think we're going to need a rezoning update, part two, and I would like to see that scheduled in the next month. Because I think that, I know for sure, I, if two other board members agree with me, I'm going to task staff to bring back some more data, finance data and other numbers data, before I feel prepared to make a, a firm decision on anything that we talk about today. So Chair, that would be my recommendation. Certainly, we can get to the end of this conversation and see. But I think a part two is going to be necessary because I misunderstood what you said, Mr. Ayers. I thought you were saying there was only 19 students, but it's 19 who were Evergreen students.
Yes, ma'am.
There are 315. And so I want to see a map like Map D that has updated numbers on it. Because in my, in my, I want to see what happens. Because I, I would rather offer remain in place to the 19 students and rezone the rest of it. Like, I don't want to make a decision that impacts these schools where we have a lot of overcrowding and they could go to a school that doesn't have overcrowding because of 19 students. I don't think that is an appropriate thing for this Board to do at all, but I didn't understand the data. And so I apologize for my misunderstanding, Board. So the first thing I want to see come back to us is how many as attending students are going to Shady Hill, Ward Highlands, South Ocala and SPAR. Because that, to me, is a piece of the puzzle that needs to be a part of the conversation that comes next, which is what we're doing with Anthony, SPAR, Reddick and Pheasantin. So I can pause there?
Yes.
Or I can, I can rip the Band-Aid off? Which would you prefer, Dr. Campbell and Chair Conrad?
I just want to make a quick comment. This was a concern I had yesterday when I went with Mr. Ayers also, that there are only 19 students. And so I anticipated that we would need a second workshop. So I am not surprised by that. I think that's going to be helpful in, so we can make a good decision. Dr. Campbell?
The other piece to me, which we're about to have the conversation of what we're doing on the North Side, but the other piece to me is the reason that we created all of these four boxes that did not include Oakcrest no longer exists either.
Or Anthony. Anthony and Oakcrest.
Correct.
Yes.
So the reason that both of those schools were excluded no longer exists.
Correct.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So for that purpose, I believe we need to have this greater North Side rezone conversation because Ward Highlands, we know, is operating at, what, 100, I was trying to get some numbers here. Ward Highlands is at 112 percent. South Ocala is at 98 percent, Shady Hill's at 88, but Oakcrest is at 73 percent. And so we have space there. We have space at Anthony right now, though that's going to be a part of a greater conversation just a moment. And so those two schools that no longer are, we excluded them for a reason. That reason no longer exists.
What was that reason?
Because they were failing schools.
Because they were, right. So-
And when I, we had this conversation eight, 10 months ago now, I had Mr. Whitehouse's department pull the data for the students that would be getting rezoned, and they actually improved Oakcrest's school grade. So part of the part two can be the PM2 data or go back to PM3 data from last year for all of the students who would be rezoned and a recalculation of the school grade at Oakcrest and then Anthony or whatever other school we want to talk about. Because data should drive, it's a part of the decision for sure. And when we talked about it eight months ago, the students that were a part of basically Shady Hill, Ward Highlands and South Ocala, had they been rezoned to Oakcrest, they would have actually improved Oakcrest's school grade by two points. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the data that I was presented. So they would not hurt the Oakcrest's school grade by any means. They would improve Oakcrest's school grade. And from a statistician perspective, increasing denominator almost always makes the situation better. It does not make it worse. So shall we move to the next part?
Since we're talking about ripping off the Band-Aid, first of all, the, I think that we need to continue to be very cognizant of, you can say it's just 19 kids, but if it was your kid, it'd be a different perspective. All of those families went through a lot and deserve some continued support and protection. I will say, also representing Oakcrest, I mean, these schools have had a lot of challenges. And a lot of reasons that were frustrating as to why we couldn't change things to try to make it better because of all these requirements and regulations and blah, blah. But it is, things have continued to evolve. We have such a great partnership with Oakcrest and Vanguard High School. And I've often wondered, wouldn't it be potentially in the best interest of the kids at Oakcrest to have the opportunity to stay at Oakcrest as middle schoolers? And make that into a combination school? And continue that partnership with Vanguard with kind of the expectation, and I didn't know the actual numbers, and you might not know them off the top of your head, but how many Oakcrest's kids are zoned for Vanguard? You know? How much connection is being done already? You know, Vanguard High School kids, students come down there and do interning, you know, with a, I want to say teacher-to-be, but all the different programs. The, the sports teams come down and support. And we know that so many kids at Oakcrest have so many deep needs. And if they had an actual pipeline and path to be able to be at Oakcrest from pre-K till the end of eighth grade, with a lot of transition planning, support and partnerships, you know, Vanguard's going to be your high school. That's, that's what we're thinking. And to be able to go and be successful. A lot of our kids at Oakcrest have so much upheaval all the time. And to have something stable and steady and to be able to build that next step, because it really isn't a very close middle school. You know, you've got Fort King and you, you have Howard, but you've got Vanguard High School right down the street where there's already all these partnerships taking place. So it was just something that had come into my mind, that's something that different parents had mentioned to me, former principals at Oakcrest had mentioned to me. So for the, for the scope of the conversation, since we're in the Band-Aid ripping business, there you go.
All right. Shall I continue? So I, I, I want to, I guess I'm going to make some recommendations to the Board. And is that the best way to proceed, Chair? Would you like me to make some recommendations? And then we can go into conversation?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the things, one of the pieces of a part two conversation that I want Ms. Boston Ellis and her team to present to the Board. We have had conversation as a Board about our priorities prior to the sales tax passing. And then Ms. Dobbins and the facilities team presented their recommendation for an order. And we had conversation and kind of came up with a preliminary plan, which is that we don't want to borrow any more money and that we want to just kind of start planning everything. And then we want to, I, I feel like we're kind of in a holding pattern now. What we said was plan everything and let's stay in a holding pattern. But a piece of the puzzle that I feel like was missing was the recommendation from our finance department as to what is in the best interest of our finances and our plans. So we had these priorities, which included new wings, closing schools, merging schools, repurposing schools. But, but our finance, our CFO has not come before us and said, this is in the best interest of our money. And I, I, while I understand we're in the business of human capital, we are ultimately the people who are responsible for finance. And I would like to see that component to our plan because I think it plays into what I'm about to say. So, so part two for me encompasses Ms. Boston Ellis coming forward and sharing a little bit about the financial impact of our decisions with rezoning and also our future planning with the sales tax. We've already been told that essentially Elementary X and Elementary W are going to add $2.5 million reoccurring costs for auxiliary staff to run the site, not including the teachers that will follow the students. That's $5 million this year, and that's $5 million every year going forward. In addition, next year, 2026, we're going to be adding a high school. One is going to guess that the high school is going to cost more than $2.5 million, right? If an elementary is, is $2.5, a high school is going to be more than that. Our budget does not have the bandwidth to take on additional personnel costs like that without offlining from other places. Starting with acknowledging that we have a job for everyone because we have a lot of vacancies. So no one is losing a job in what I, certainly my intention is no one is losing a job in the plan I'm about to present because we have more than enough jobs to go around. So I believe that it is the most, and I would like Ms. Boston Ellis to bring numbers to back up my claim, but I believe that it's in the best financial interest of this Board that as we online new sites, we are offlining sites. So that we are trying to net zero costs as close as possible to the auxiliary staff that is required to run sites. And so what, to me, that looks like is prioritizing the 30 million at SPAR and going ahead and closing Anthony Elementary as an elementary site and making SPAR large enough to service the students at Anthony and SPAR, understanding that some level of rezoning has to occur. But I'm talking in purely quads right now. So I guess bear with me as I'm kind of looking at the schools as four squares. And so I would like to see a conversation and some information about how much, in a 10-year look forward, how much are we going to save or spend by prioritizing 30 million at SPAR and offlining Anthony as an elementary site and servicing all those students in one place? Because while the teachers will follow the students, we would be able to use those supplemental staff in other places throughout our district and our vacancies and support our new schools and other schools throughout our county. And we wouldn't necessarily add an additional $2.5 million if that were to be a wash because we're adding and taking away. The other side of 441, we have Pheasantin and Reddick. Reddick has been at 50 percent occupancy, for the sake of the conversation, for a long time. When my husband went there 30 years ago, it was not. It was a, it was a bustling school. But it is not anymore. And to Dr. Campbell's point, the farmland preservation boundary is going to significantly limit the amount of homes and new families that move into the area to respect the farmland that is in that area. So my recommendation there would be that we offline Pheasantin as a elementary school, and those students in some capacity are rezoned to Reddick. And I would like to see Pheasantin turned into something similar to what we have done at Howard Academy, which is a community center. I would love to see Pheasantin be a home of potentially a program that MTC has that is most appropriate for the North End. I would love to see Pheasantin's playground and gym turned into a partnership with Marion County for, and we're sitting in the perfect place to have that conversation for Parks and Recreation. It has a beautiful playground. It has a great kickball field donated by their business partner. The gym just received air conditioning, so I would love to see that become a community access park, which we know our community talks about all of the time, wanting to access our sites. I would love to see high school and GED programmatic options offered there. I would love to see a health department program offered there so that families can go there to receive dental services and other health-related services. I think that is taking it back to a level of what Pheasantin was in the beginning, which was Pheasantin Academy, and serving students in a different capacity while also serving our community and putting students at a school like Reddick, which is more, better equipped to serve them. It is a facility that has newer, newer everything, pretty much, except for the electric, which was redone at Pheasantin. It has more than enough space. It is a beautiful property. And I do believe it would be in the best interest of the students. So that, I think, encumbers the thoughts that I have. So Board, we can chat about it.
Yes. So I am pretty much concurring with just about everything that was said. I have a different thought for what Pheasantin can be used for. But, I mean, I don't know if you want me to elaborate on that now. I agree with part of what you said. I believe the property at Pheasantin Elementary School is the perfect location for a special need shelter, a regional special need shelter. There is vacant land there that could be used region- A regional special need shelter. There is vacant land there that could be used regionally. It is the perfect location between I-75 and 441. I could see it being a collaboration between the county and the state. And potentially our role in it is the donation of the land. That's my initial thought. There's a lot of conversation that would need to happen there. I think there needs to be a partnership with the Early Learning Coalition. There needs to be a VPK program on that site. I do believe the county could run as a community center of sorts. I believe the state could use it as part of a Black History Museum project that they started in other communities that they could expand to Marion County. So during the day, it would have lots of opportunities to not just be a vacant facility, but actually have hustle and bustle occurring on that campus that may or may not be under the purview of Marion County Public Schools. Because I think part of offlining a site is also offlining the cost of that site. And so that's, I too have had very similar thoughts of doing all that we need to do to rezone these kids and move them. We have made facility upgrades to Pheasant recently, but not enough that are making such a significant impact that we don't continue to have facility struggles on that campus. I think there are historic parts of it and less historic parts of that campus. And when we were at the EOC for the hurricanes, I thought that's the perfect spot. It's between I-75 and 441. And we already heard it needs to be between Marion County and Alachua County. It, that's my personal opinion of what we could do with that. I have had offline conversations with a couple of folks about that who are interested in that thought process. But each time I've said, this is an Allison Campbell idea. The school board has not heard my idea. Today, you're hearing my idea of what that would look like, but.
Can I just add one thing to your thought real quick?
Okay.
I just want to say that I, I think that the community should lead, I think that the board needs to make a decision about the site being an elementary school and then a community committee works with our staff to come up with the programatics of what the site will serve in the future. So I, I wanted to clarify, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think you probably agree to some, to some extent. I want to make a decision about where we service students for pre-K through 12 education. And then I want the community along with our staff to make a decision about what we do at the site. And so I wanted to be clear about that. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just piggybacked what you were saying.
I mean, I, I agree. I think we need to make the decision first of determining whether or not we are using that as a Marion County Public School. Is, it's beyond just the elementary school conversation. It's whether or not Marion County Public Schools continues to operate a school on that campus. Dr. James recommended some things about MTC and some other things. And I'm not certain, again, if we're offlining a campus, I believe that it might behoove us to offline a campus. And so with that conversation, I do believe the community needs to be a significant part of that conversation. I know that they are an active community. They have active alumni. They are very proud of the site and as are we. And that's why I think if it went, even became a state park of sorts, that there are other things that that site could be used for that could become a site. I'm not going to say similar to Fort King, but if it became a state park for Black history and all the history that is there, similar to what we have at Howard Academy. But it, it could be expanded and then county partially running things there as well as state. I could see that being a huge benefit, but that certainly would need to come as a recommendation from staff before we made a vote on that. But first decision is consolidation and I am in favor of this conversation.
Can I just clarify? Are you in favor of prioritizing building at SPAR? Because we would have to build something at SPAR to consolidate Anthony.
I was prepared today to have the conversation about Reddick and Pheasant. I was not coming to talk about SPAR and Anthony, but I could have that conversation. I, I think that as we get into the middle school conversation in just a moment, Mr. Ayers.
High school?
Well, yes, but there is, the middle school conversation that we've had about Liberty and Howard, I was going to bring up at the end to say, when are we having a conversation about the Lake Shore Middle School site? Because I do think, I know we don't even have a construction manager chosen yet. But this board is a forward-thinking board and we need to start considering what that property will become. And what we need to do with the Bellevue Elementary, Bellevue Santos. When we were touring the bus garage yesterday, there is a transportation location at Lake Shore Middle School. We can't just automatically offline that as a property until we come up with what we're going to do about that. So there's a lot of moving parts on this that I'm grateful we're starting to have the conversation. But we are going to have to have those middle school conversations too. We have kind of one-offed here. We did the Liberty and, and the one we did last year with Liberty and Horizon, excuse me, Liberty and Horizon to try to help with the Marion Oaks overcrowding. And now we're having the conversation about Liberty and Howard, trying to correct something that doesn't need correcting any longer. And so trying to, so we're doing that, but we're going to be moving Lake Shore Middle School to a completely different part of our community. And so, and I'm grateful for that because we've owned that land for a long time and that's where the students are coming from predominantly. So that's good. But then the Lake Shore Middle School property becomes another conversation that potentially lands in this funding prioritization that we didn't even talk about. So whether we have to move a bus garage to what is now Bellevue Santos and we build something there. There's just a lot that we need to talk about, but I know today is about North End, so let's talk about that.
And I think part of the reason I want Ms. Boston Ellis to bring forward finances is, is the rough numbers that I did. And I presented a little bit when we talked about our priorities in the fall. In 10 years, prioritizing 30 million at SPAR pays for itself. When we offline Anthony and when we, when we take out the continued maintenance that would be required at SPAR. And so I, I know my math is fuzzy math and our CFO is acclaimed. And so I want to see her come forward and share the math so that there's financial substance in a potential plan. So I welcome comments from the rest of the board.
I'll just quickly say, Board, and then I'll get further comments. This came up in my conversation with Mr. Ayers yesterday, my concern about low enrollment in the North End, particularly with Reddick and Pheasant. So I am on board for that conversation. Board Member Thrower?
So much to unpack here. Reddick. Reddick has been underutilized for a really long time. So we definitely need to do something about Reddick. As far as offlining other schools, you only reduce expense by doing nothing with them that costs the school board any money. So that's something to keep in mind.
She's saying what I, if we turn it into MTC, I think what I hear you saying is if we, if we, she's agreeing with you, I think, that turning it into MTC.
All depends on what, if a committee decides that they want to repurpose it for something education-related, you know, then we're going to be costing again. So if you're talking about selling it to development, then it's off our books. So I know that's a widespread. As far as, well, I'll just stick, I'll just stick with, with Reddick. We, we really need to come up with a solution for Reddick. It is one of our, funny to even say it, one of our newer schools. You know, a lot of capacity there. I'm not, I can't remember exactly what the acreage is. But to throw something else into this, what are, what are our other, our other primary challenges are? Finding people to work, finding a place, them finding a place to live while they work for us. Something that we have is being land-rich on our school grounds. I would welcome conversation about educator villages. That we don't run, that the legal things are all taken care of, but utilizing some of our school properties so that people can afford to work for us and, and make it convenient. And so that's something else to be thinking about. Pheasantin has always been a place for education when there was no other access. So honoring the, that pretty sacred place is going to be top of mind for me. And in any decision or vote I would make. I think it's important to have a conversation, to include everybody that is invested in that. But I see that as compared to some decisions that we need to make now and could probably make with less complications. I think we're looking at short, medium and long-term goals. And, you know, keep in mind, we have two elementary schools that we're opening, a high school that we're opening. In the meantime, there's a lot going on to manage. So those are, those are my initial thoughts. And I feel like what I'm hearing is, is that there's going to be a delay in what we're doing with rezoning of the North End, which Mr. Ayers came to us today looking for consensus. And there's a timeline that is important to meet so families know what's going on. I don't want to end up putting everybody into a tailspin by having too much, too many spinning plates either. So those are my initial thoughts.
With this, we were talking about the Evergreen Elementary Auxiliary Zone initially. And we've jumped to SPAR and Anthony consolidating and one closing. And then we've jumped to Pheasant and Reddick consolidating and closing. And anytime we start talking about closing schools and consolidating, I think we need to be cautious, extremely cautious. I kept hearing the phrase ripping the Band-Aid off. So obviously if you know there's a Band-Aid there, you know there's a wound there. You know there's going to be some hurt in this conversation. So I think we need to stick to what we were here to do and deal with the Evergreen. We do need to have community input when we start talking about ripping Band-Aids off. Because who are we ripping, who, whose Band-Aid is getting ripped off? And we, as a board, do have the responsibility to make good decisions, fiscal decisions. But we also have a right to do things morally right. And the recommendation, Mr. Ayers didn't bring that. He brought us some specific things. I think we can have a workshop and discuss the consolidation of those schools or the closing of those schools or whatever we need to do. I think right now, we need to be cautious on how you proceed. Because if you proceed the wrong way, you're going to get a war that you're not ready for. And I could tell you, it's going to be a war that's going to be very unpopular. I already know that. Board Member Thrower, you and I have been on the board when those situations came arose before. And the, and the feedback was not productive. It, matter of fact, our, some of the conversation in the community, and I'm not just talking about one community, the community as a whole disintegrates to stuff that it shouldn't have disintegrated into. So can we deal with Evergreen and this auxiliary and the recommendation that Mr. Ayers has just put before us? And then he's, we got to deal with it eventually. And I'm not saying kick it way down the road. I'm saying, I don't think this is the day or the time for it.
So I want to say this, and I think the reason Dr. Campbell and I were prepared, I know to have this conversation, I was, is because it is a part of the Evergreen plan. So right now you have students going to SPAR who would theoretically rezone to Anthony because that, that school is closer to them and they are in the SPAR auxiliary zone. But if we are going to do something with SPAR and Anthony, there'd be no sense in making those kids go to Anthony if one or two years down the road, they're going to wind up back at SPAR. That's not in the best interest of the student. So having an understanding of what our intention is on the North End is also in conjunction with this Evergreen plan. I think they are one of the same. So I, I want to say first, that is why I think they go together. I want to also say, similar to what Board Member Thrower had shared, a conversation I actually had with the county commissioner. It's been probably six plus months now. They were at a conference and a school district took, took a vacated school site and turned it into essentially an educator village. And I, I in my brain see that happening at Anthony Elementary. I think that Anthony Elementary has potential walkability. You can walk to multiple Dollar Generals. There's a Jiffy store there. And so there's a way to get market goods. And I think that it is also pretty centrally located on the North End. And so in my brain, I kind of say, I could see Anthony becoming a bit of an educator village. It has that really historic cafeteria, which we could kind of turn into a common space. And essentially what I've gathered is you create a developer's agreement of some sort. And so a developer, you give it to a developer who then turns it into an educator village. And we're hands-off. It's not a part of us at all, but we have some kind of MOU that essentially says, our employees can live there at kind of a fixed rate and we, we come up with this whole scenario. So I absolutely would be on board with that as a potential repurpose of Anthony Elementary even. And finally, I want to say, the Band-Aid we're ripping off is on the adults. The adults in our community. That's where the Band-Aid lives. The wound is from past history with adults. The Band-Aid is not on the children. The children will be just as excited to go to a school that is newer and fresher and more advanced than the school they are in now. If we prioritized the, the sales tax money at SPAR, we would essentially be rezoning students and all of those students would be in a new site. And the students at Pheasant would be attending a newer site and a fresher site at Reddick. So the children have no Band-Aid and the children have no wound. The Band-Aid is covering a wound for the adults. And what we say is we're going to do what's best for students, always. And so understanding there are very big feelings for some of the adults and hearing those feelings, but making courageous decisions for what's best for students, that is what I'm prepared to do. So I think that a part two conversation for me includes what, of these auxiliary zones, to go back to the original conversation, how many students would be going to Oak Crest? And how many students would be going to Anthony? Because those are the two sites that this board has at least said have availability. If the plan from staff looks different, then I look forward to receiving that. But that to me is a part of this conversation. And then data from our financial office on the finances behind school repurposing, site closure and rezoning on the North End for those four schools. So I'm not prepared to make a decision today about Evergreen because I need further information. And we have said, we haven't even had, for the Liberty Middle School, we haven't even had the community input meeting yet. But I feel urgency about the Evergreen rezoning and I feel urgency about the North End. Since I've gotten on this board, I've shared with our superintendent my desires and we've had this conversation for two plus years now. We are not in a financial position to continue to delay conversations like this. And we need to be as effectively communicating and looking at our timeline as aggressively as possible to ensure that we are making decisions timely, in my opinion.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any further comment?
I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay. Board Member Thrower?
Just to be clear, we gave Mr. Ayers consensus on the Liberty Howard rezoning. So we're still good there.
Yep.
Yes. And with more information that is being requested, I would ask and make sure that we have a follow-up as soon as possible. Because if we're talking about, you know, we, we were talking about not do, you know, holding, holding steady. And now we're going to have the community's attention. So the follow-up to this, part two, needs to occur much sooner than later. However, be comprehensive enough with data and, and answers that we can have a real conversation.
Yeah.
I agree. And I think this board shows willingness to schedule special meetings. So I'm not even suggesting that we need to fit this into an already existing timeline, understanding that we only meet at most twice a month for work sessions. So I would be more than happy to find dates to have special conversations so that we can ensure that we are respecting a timeline that's necessary to have this conversation.
Want to be, Chair.
Yep.
Just want to be ready for, and the parents to be ready to know what's going on for, for August.
Correct.
And, and not backup staff because of all of these requirements and rulemaking and meetings and, you know, the timeline.
Okay. One last concern I wanted to bring forward, which I shared with you yesterday, is our special needs students and how long they are on buses. So I would like to know a number of how many of these 315 students are attending a hub? And how long they're on the bus? Because I would like that to be a priority.
I do have some preliminary data on that. There are 28 students in those auxiliary zones, all encompassing, that receive special transportation via ESE. And the average pickup time for those students is 6:30 a.m.
And how long is their bus ride?
The, I can tell you this, that also the data that I received for transportation, the average pickup time for all elementary school students in the district is 6:15 a.m. With a school arrival time between 7:05 and 7:15. So if we go by that information, it's probably a, you know, 35, 40-minute bus ride. But that's consistent with the rest of the.
Okay, because that, thank you for that, Mr. Ayers. You did that very quickly, because I just saw you yesterday.
Thanks for transportation.
So thank you for that. But it, it is a complaint that comes forward, I will say frequently, with concerns for special needs students being on the bus for an hour or longer. So I just want to make sure, if we are able, if those situations are happening here in this zoning, that, that we're able to address it and make it better. Anything else? No. Dr. Gullett?
Here we go again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before Mr. Ayers continues the presentation, because we're right in the middle of that, Mr. Ayers, do you have any questions as to next steps on the board's conversation?
So I just want to be clear, because there's two, there's, there's multiple facets that would need to be included into the next presentation. Not only my data, which is strictly student enrollment, student placement, potential numbers of students going to potential schools. But would all, and I'm, I'm clear on what data that is. But facilities would have to be involved, because there would be facilities-type questions. What questions, I mean, what direction? Because their facilities are not here right now, but I mean, I'm sure they're listening. What direction would they need to have information and data to be presented at the next work session on this topic?
I would, I mean, if I can, I think Ms. Dobbins has already put all this information together. She did a very extensive Excel spreadsheet that shows the work needed now and work needed in a five, 10, 15-year look forward. And so, I mean, I know I used that information when I was kind of coming up with my numbers back in the fall. So I would think that the information can just come from the work she's already gathered, personally.
And, thank you. In tandem with what she's created, though, estimated costs on what it would take to do certain things. So like, if we have, the roof is in red. I'm using the example of the Excel spreadsheet we've all seen. If the roof is in red, what's the approximate cost that's going to be? And the timeline on when we need to repair or replace it? Because then that gives us a five-to-10-year.
I think she included that.
Maybe that is on the bottom of the sheet. I have to think about it.
Yeah, I think she put the red, the yellows, and then the greens on the bottom.
Maybe that is there. So, yeah. So, yeah, it, but probably just for the public to see. I mean, we, certainly anybody who wants a public records request could request it right now. But for the public to see as a part of a presentation, I think that would be helpful on, you know, what they already have in the, and what they already have in the five-year work plan that may already be in the plan, that obviously we know is unfunded. But that, and then also the operating costs. So that's where the, the finance side comes into play. It's not just the facility's hard costs. It's also the operating costs and what it would look like to completely offline a particular property. What, obviously, all of those people, as Dr. James said, there are plenty of places to go. We can find you a place to be right now. We have two schools that are, three schools coming onboard the next two years. So I, I think those are the three components. You already understand what your.
I do, and I would also add with the facilities aspect. Because without having running the hard true numbers of knowing, because we, we're just assuming right now, which I could get on board with, that there are two schools that these, all these students could fit at. Potentially, there may be, need to be portables put on those campuses to accommodate that. So that cost would be included in that.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, yes, I mean, I think, understanding, and of course, also, in very raw form, what we're saying is, Pheasant goes to Reddick, Anthony goes to Spar. But in your side of the house, there are, there are some times, it's not that pure. Actually, probably all of the time, it is not that pure. So acknowledging a conversation around, maybe it isn't that pure, and we need to talk about what it could look like, or what, what else it would shake out to, or.
So I just want a further clarification. I just heard something that you said that maybe expand what I thought I was going to do. At the next work session, what I was intending to do was to deal with strictly the Evergreen Auxiliary Zone and potentially what school would all those students go to? And what would that would look like? You just mentioned Pheasant and moving those. That's a separate conversation that I've, I'm assuming that's a separate, that, from this work session. Because this would just be dealing.
So in my brain, the next time we talk about this, we're talking about all of it. Am I, I see Dr. Campbell shaking her head.
I'm, I mean, I, I, we, we have to have a global conversation about if we are going to move forward with any of these things. In tandem with that, this expanded potentially Oak Crest Zone and expanded potentially Anthony Zone is a part of that conversation. So whether those two things happen separately, as two different items on a work session, they have to happen on the same day.
Agreed.
Because they are related.
I can agree with that. I can agree with that. I just don't want to, I don't believe in knee-jerk.
Well, I would like to be clear, this is no knee-jerking for me. I have been spending two years or more thinking about this and having conversation with Mr. Ayers and Dr. Gullett. So while this is the first time we're having a public conversation about this since I've been on the board, there is in no way, shape, or form knee-jerking happening from this board member seat.
And it's not. It's, it's been conversation that's been going on for years and years and years, and they're tough decisions. And, and we are in a position to have to make some tough decisions. And I didn't add this into my comments earlier, but when I spoke with Mr. Ayers and Ms. Boston Ellis, after making the decision, I think one of you also said this, bringing the community in to be included in the conversation is really the most important aspect of this. Because I am interested in what their ideas are. What, what are they interested in using Pheasant for? What other, what other purposes, you know, would meet the needs that they want for their community? And so I just want to emphasize that, because the term rip the Band-Aid off has a very negative connotation. And, you know, something, sometimes difficult decisions, they, they are hard. But it doesn't mean that they're not good in what needs to be done for the community. And so change is hard for really everyone. And so this is a difficult conversation, it's a hard conversation. And, and I personally, I want everybody to be at the table. I want to get everybody's input. And so I just, I just want to round out with that, Mr. Ayers.
Well, I just had a clarifying question on what you said. Do you want the community, do you want this board to make a decision about rezoning separate from the community having input on what happens next at the facility?
I believe we have to decide what we're doing first, and then
Thank you for clarifying that.
the community comes in to tell us what.
What we do next.
Yes.
Okay. And I wanted to clarify that, because I thought that's what you were saying, but I didn't receive, I'm not sure everyone received it the same way. So.
I don't receive it that way. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't receive it that way. I think we need to, in all conversations concerning this, the community needs to be brought into this.
We'll have a community hearing, as we are supposed to. But I think ultimately, this board needs to make a decision about rezoning. And then what we do next at the facility becomes an all-inclusive community conversation.
Because I think the financial piece, which is what we're responsible for, Ms. Boston Ellis has to share with us, is it fiscally responsible? I believe it is going to be fiscally responsible, but I want to see the numbers. And so that, to me, has to come first. Are we going to make a fiscally responsible decision? And if the answer is yes, then we're asking the community, what is your pleasure?
I wanted to clarify that, because I'm not sure we all received it the same way. Thank you.
Anything else, Reverend Cummings?
I don't know.
Dr. Gullett's leaning forward.
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask similarly to Dr. James, clarification. So what I picturing occurring at the, at an upcoming work session is a list of options. Many different options based on all the conversations you've had today. What the cost would be, what the facility's needs would be. And bring all those options so the board can have discussion, and then we decide on next steps. Then the community input comes.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not doing any community input before we bring a list of those?
I haven't acknowledged my other board members here. My back was turned. So is there anything, Board Member Throer or Dr. Campbell, that you'd like to add?
I agree with the assessment that Dr. Gullett has just given. I, I believe the board can make the decision. We're going to hear.
It's going to be.
We're going to hear from people between this very moment and whatever time we have that public conversation. And we potentially will have public comment that day and all, all of that as well. So I, I'm not concerned about the community speaking to us. I don't think it requires the district to do any formal communication efforts whatsoever, like a survey or community meeting, none of that. I think the board can have the decision. I do want to express, I understand the value of education continuing to happen on that site. But I don't think it requires Marion County Public Schools to be the one that's providing the education. That's why I mentioned an early learning coalition partnership or something like that, that isn't necessarily us providing that. Because one of the suggestions as an option to us, in my opinion, would be completely offlining that property entirely. Certainly, there can be other options that are presented, if it's an MTC site or, or something. But I, I would recommend at least one of the options to be completely not having that as a Marion County Public School site.
Board Member Throer?
Well, this conversation originated in saving money and offlining schools to do it. So that's what I would want to know, is to offline a school completely that we're talking about, then what's the savings? And then there's all these other
Right.
possibilities, which I want to make clear to the community right at this moment, are simply conversational. It is the duty of this board to continue to, to continue to grow our district in a way that, that best meets the needs of the kids, of the families, the community, the taxpayer. And there's always going to be a lot of different reactions. You know, we're never going to get 100% approval on, on anything that we do. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the conversation.
Okay. Mr. Ayers?
I just want to make sure that I'm perfectly clear on, because there's multiple
Layers.
There's multiple layers to this next meeting that we're going to have. From my seat, my department, what I'm going to provide, what I anticipate, and correct me if I'm wrong, any board member, is two plans. One plan that just involves the rezoning of the auxiliary sites, what schools they would go to, and what that would mean to those schools, absent of any other possible offline or closing. And then a second rezoning plan is if specific facilities were offline, where would those students go? And then do a complete rezoning of that whole area. So on the student enrollment and zoning side, I'm seeing bringing two options. One that is just independent of any offlining of any schools, and one that would include what would it look like with that. And then working with facilities to find out what that would entail on their end. And then getting with Ms. Boston Ellis and the finance department, because there would be more questions about what the, what the fiscal impact of plus or minus of, of all of those. Am I?
I think, I think you've got it.
A question I just would like to have covered is, is when we, when we present that Evergreen rezoning option, of the 19 students that are the original Evergreen students, a question I will have is, how many of them are receiving transportation? Because sometimes when we rezone, we say intend to remain, but we won't provide, or we will provide. And so I would, I would certainly love to consider something unique for those 19 students, if, if the board moves in that direction. And understanding whether we transport them or not would definitely be a part of the conversation for me.
Good point. Yes, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Cummings, but I believe that that was completely what we did. You know, we provided transportation for the Evergreen kids. And so I can't imagine that we wouldn't continue to, to offer that till they're, you know, on out of here.
Yes, and so I would just like to know that number. That would be something.
I know Mr. Jacobs is back in the office watching this now. So we will, and I will, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, none of this would be possible without the team effort for that. So we will start working on that now.
Okay. Do we want to think about a date? Do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Board, we're just going to recess for five minutes, use the restroom, and we'll see you back here. Thank you. They're not ready. I apologize. There we are. Okay. We are back. It is 12:29, board. Mr. Ayers, we're going to turn it over to you.
Just before we move on, I just wanted to put a bow on this last thing. As we as staff start working on your requests, we may need clarification again because this may expand into more questions and more things to make sure that we're all in the same time. I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Chair, understanding a timeline, when do you think, looking at future work session agendas, is there room on a future work session? I know we have one February 6th and then we have one February 20th. But, you know, do we need to have a special work session?
Can we have a special? Why don't we just have a special? Why don't we just schedule that?
I think so because I believed, I was glancing at Dr. Gullett and she kind of made large eyes in fact that the agenda is already full. And so I'm for a special session. It is labor intensive.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Remember the board, we were just discussing that I think it's probably going to need its own work session. And as we were discussing and hearing the board's input, and I've made a lot of notes, and I know team is watching also virtually. It's going to take some time to lay all these out. And I think more importantly, the discussion that the board needs to have is going to take, it's going to take quite some time. So I think we will need to, if you could allow us to go back today and we're going to meet, we just talked about we're going to meet as a team and look at what that's going to take and then I can give you an update next week of what we think that looks like, if that's okay.
Okay, board, is that good for you?
Yes, I just, I know if we're going to make a decision for August of '25, we need to have timely discussion. And so I don't want to get to the end of February to have this discussion again. I would like, I would like if possible for us to be having this discussion in the first week or two of February. So I know that that might be outside of the scope of possibility, but I I don't want a timeline to put this off a whole nother year if that's possible.
So just do your best, Mr. Ayers.
And understanding that the board is not available the 12th and 13th of February, so that anyway, I agree, the sooner the better, but we also have some calendar constraints ourselves, so.
We'll move as quickly as we can. And I do agree that now that the board's had this public conversation, we're going to move forward. We need to move forward sooner than later. Thank you.
The next rezoning I will present is relief rezoning for high school CCC in the southwest part of the county. This slide shows the site plan and architectural rendering of the new school. The high school is scheduled to open in August 2026 with 2011 student stations for the future expansion of 700 additional student stations. Relief school rezoning for high school CCC was developed in collaboration with the student assignment and records, facilities, and curriculum departments. The next slide will present the proposed attendance zone and enrollment projections for high school CCC and other affected high schools. The proposed attendance zones were created after consideration of all options and current data. This slide contains a chart showing the current year's high school enrollment and utilization percentages. Also included in the chart are the percentage of zoned students who attend a zoned high school and the percentages of students who attend non-zoned high school. This information is used when projecting enrollment. This slide contains a map showing the proposed attendance zone for high school CCC. The proposed attendance zone contains student populations from Bellevue High, Dunellen High, and Westport High. This slide shows the projected enrollment of impacted high schools after sorry, here we go. This slide shows the as-zoned students who reside in the proposed attendance zone area. For high schools they are currently zoned for. The number in the 80% column indicates the number of students that typically attend the zoned school. This slide shows the proposed attendance zone changes for other high schools. The additional zone changes were proposed to level school enrollment and alleviate overcrowding. The chart shows the as-zoned students residing in the proposed zone change areas. The number in the 80% column indicates the number of students that typically attend their zoned school. This slide shows the projected enrollment of impacted high schools after zoning changes. High school CCC and proposed zoning changes would be effective for the '26-'27 school year shown in yellow. The '25-'26 school year is listed to provide a baseline enrollment for projections. Please note that high school CCC is listed twice, both with and without the completed third floor that would increase their student, their fish seats. This slide shows the map for the proposed attendance zones for high school CCC and other affected high schools. The colors on the map represent the new school boundaries and the black line represents the current boundaries. The next step for the proposed zoning changes for high school CCC includes scheduling community and stakeholder meetings, a rule development work session, and a rule-making public hearing and vote. If approved, the zoning changes would be effective for the '26-'27 school year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Board, I'll turn it over to you. Okay, sure, go ahead, Dr. James.
So in the briefing that we had, one of the things that was mentioned was that there was an alternative plan where Dunellen High School was left pretty empty. Can you elaborate on that conversation we had, Mr. Ayers? Because that is something that I would like to see brought back to this part two work session.
Referring to this slide, when we first initially did the rezoning, we pulled the students out of Dunellen High School. And there were 1167 students, which left the, 80% about it would be 934. And that would make Dunellen approximately 600 students, which is a very utilized, you know, very underutilized school zone. And hearing, you know, conversations from the board, every time we come up with a rezoning, we said, well, let's go ahead and do district rezoning while we're doing this. And that's where the plan came. We pulled students out of Westport to fill up Dunellen High School to utilize that facility while also, you know, reducing the overcrowding at Westport.
So, board, I'm not sure if we all had that conversation or not, so I wanted him to say it for the record. I wanted to offer something, board. One of the things that we chose as a priority was a Dunellen Middle High School. If we were to get presented an alternative option to this in a part two of a workshop that left Dunellen High School underutilized with the rezoning that would be done for high school, it would essentially afford the opportunity for Dunellen Middle School, which has 712 students currently, to all but fit into Dunellen High School, which would allow us to offline Dunellen Middle School. And offlining Dunellen Middle School, which is a conversation we've already had as a board in some degree. Because when we're adding high school CCC, we're adding more than $2.5 million in residual personnel costs. And so if we were to able to offline Dunellen Middle School at the same time, I believe it would put us in a stronger financial position. So I, this board member would like to see in our part two, a presentation that includes what Mr. Ayers has alluded to, which is leaving Dunellen High School rather empty and then essentially moving Dunellen, excuse me, Dunellen Middle onto the Dunellen High School site. I think that that simply allows us to continue a conversation. We can still rebuild Dunellen High as a Dunellen Middle High. From a programmatic perspective, we would be able to, it's secondary, we would be able to facilitate the learning as it exists. And then we make a transition in building a new site with the sales tax dollars. And I would love, again, the financial office to provide what that looks like, what that, how that impacts our financial position. So that is a thought I had when Mr., I hadn't had it until Mr. Ayers said about the option one that's not presented here that underutilized Dunellen High School. And I thought, well, why don't we just put Dunellen Middle on Dunellen High's campus to start then? So that would be the thought I had, one of the thoughts I had, board, if we wanted to start there maybe, if anyone else is interested.
Well, I just, attorney powers, I'm not sure in this matter how much I can say. I just do have some concerns with that plan. And so, security-wise, I just don't know that I'd be in favor with that. So I guess that's probably all I can say.
The six, 12 school?
Just using Dunellen High. Is that all I can say?
To alleviate, there are facility concerns
Yes, that's better, thank you, Mr. Ayers.
With combining the schools now instead of doing it as a purpose-built school. But those aren't, those concerns are outside of my scope of expertise.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because the same number of students would be serving, getting served as is being served right now. So I don't, I don't, I guess we would have to have an executive session so I could better understand that statement. Am I the only one that's confused?
I don't really understand what the conversation is that's happening about the facility of Dunellen High School in general. So I had not considered the possibility of combining them sooner rather than later. The statement based on what you've presented to us that I'll make about this conversation is in analyzing the map a bit more, I understand why we've chosen to pull certain pockets of students out of the Westport High School zone and move them to Dunellen. I just can't imagine how the close proximity of some of those students are to Westport. For them to go all the way to Dunellen is a big, big ask for me. So that's, that's the only piece that I see about this that is in relation to. Because I understand why we're trying to do it and I am all for rezoning the whole county when we're talking high school because we're bringing on an entirely new high school. We do need to rezone the entire county for high school. Completely agree with that. But that one, I'm looking at map H, the one pocket of green that we are going to be pulling from Westport Zone and move to Dunellen. That's just some of those students in that, in that corner, that southeast corner of that are going to be really close to Westport and we're going to send them out to Dunellen. But I guess we already do that in some ways, so.
Where are you talking about, Dr. Campbell?
Map H, the top green.
I think you're on the right one. It's just the top green, yes.
Yes, because that's what the recommendation is. And it's in relation to what Dr. James was just talking about because that's where they're pulling the students in to repopulate Dunellen. they're pulling the students in to repopulate Dunellen. Because if we leave it as-is and pull all the students from Dunellen, that is already a part of the plan, into high school CCC, then they have to repopulate Dunellen High School, and that's where they're pulling them from, is that Westport Zone. I, I am all in favor of anything we can do to alleviate pressure on Westport's population. I would prefer it being 2,500 students or under. 3,000 is, is, I, my opinion, individual board member, is becoming unmanageable. Certainly, that's my opinion. It's not from administration or anyone else there. It's the same conversation I mentioned before the winter break, to say, "How large do, how large is too large for an elementary school? How large is too large for a middle school?" And I'm going to say, "How large is too large for a high school in, in our community?" Other communities with hundreds of thousands of students may have different metrics on what they believe is too large. But I think that's a conversation that this board has to ultimately have at some point when we're continuing to add wings and wings and wings. That's not this high school conversation. But I am grateful that this will be alleviating pressure off of Westport High School and look forward to that.
Yes.
I too am grateful there would be a relief of pressure. Just, Mr. Ayers, can you address, because I had that same concern that Dr. Campbell just shared, can you just reiterate the explanation that you gave me about distance and?
Yeah, the, the, the distance, that was considered, but the multiple things, when we look for students, we look for distance to the school, we look at neighborhood contingency, and we look at major roads to try to do that. And I completely understand what you're saying, Dr. Campbell, about the distance, but there's all, you know, we're, we're leaving that somewhere. Sometimes it's just, it's difficult to do, because, you know, there's no other group of students that we could pull out of the Westport Zone to repopulate that would not create even more problems than what that is.
Okay, yes. Reverend Cummings.
And, Mr. Ayers, and I'm, I'm probably going back some time, before there was Westport there, if I'm not mistaken, that same area, part of that area was going to Dunellen anyway, correct?
I believe it was, yes, sir.
So, it's not something new?
Been heard of.
It's been done in the past, yes.
Exactly. So, prior to there being a Westport, that was the Dunellen area. I don't think, I don't see it as being such a pool, for me.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Yes, Dr. James?
I have proximity questions that are not addressed at Dunellen, so do we want to move beyond Dunellen? I just don't want to change our train of thought.
I just didn't hear from Board Member Thrower, so let me just check. Board Member Thrower, do you have input?
Um, I'll, I'll just say that, again, you know, we have to define what offlining means in terms of the fiscal side of it. You know, if, if we're talking getting out of the education business completely on that property and selling that property, that's one definition of offline. If it's getting out of the education business but keeping the property, that's another offline. So, I just need more specific definitions about intended use of offline schools before I would agree to vote to offline a school.
Thank you.
So, my concern, oh, did you want to talk? Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As to your question, Ms. Conrad, the exempt portion of a meeting that could reveal any security plan or portion thereof is made confidential exempt by public records law and also the sunshine law. And so, specifically, it's that portion of a meeting. So, if there is anything of value that needs to be discussed with that, what we would need to do is to go into closed session, and we can reconvene. It, you know, take five minutes, but if there was anything about your concern and what you wanted to address, we would just simply need to go offline, have it addressed with security personnel, and then we could, we could reconvene.
I appreciate that, Attorney Powers. I just don't think it's necessary at this time, but thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
So, going to the other side of the county and looking at the forest boundary that would be created, two things that I'd like to see. I want to know how many students are impacted that would be turning green from the orange. And if you don't know what I mean when I say that, I'm just referencing map H. It appears, and this map is not perfect, but based on pulling up Apple Maps on my phone, it appears we're literally cutting a neighborhood in half with that green and orange boundary line. And it looks like it's going, the cut line is southeast 64th Avenue Road, is what I'm gathering, and that, that road just goes into a neighborhood. And so, I'm, I always struggle when one side of the road goes to one school and one side of the road goes to another school.
That was me growing up.
And I can tell you that when we worked on that, we looked at different ways to do that. That is a main, a main road through that subdivision. And with zoning, in the conversation I've had, the line gets drawn somewhere.
I understand.
And so, that's, we picked the main road as opposed, it's not a neighborhood road. It is a main road, but it does split houses. I mean, there's houses on both sides of the road.
So, what I'd like to know is how many students are in that green? What is the, how many, what is the number?
315 as-zoned students.
For Forest?
That are currently attending Forest as-zoned.
Oh, because that's on a previous slide. Sorry, I didn't make that connection. I, and I know we talked about this, and it's, I, you feel confident in saying that that dot that's going to be created for the green boundary that's now inside Forest's existing zone is more than two miles away from Forest High School. So, if I were to take the corner of that green...
I have not mapped that out. I don't know that.
So, I, I, I want to feel super confident that we're not drawing a boundary line.
But I can tell you, those students do not walk to Forest. They receive transportation to Forest because of the main road.
Understanding that, yes. But if I live less than two miles, I just would like to know for certain that that boundary line is outside of the two miles. Because in public discourse, what we have decided is that if you live within two miles of a school, generally speaking, unless you walk zone, unless it's not walking like a Oak Crest or, I mean, Ocala Springs or like this, and we provide transportation. So, what I don't want to see is a boundary line created that is less than two miles from Forest High School, and then we're going to bus them all the way to Lake Weir. That is just... Yeah. And then, and so, I want to see where I, and I don't, I, this map is hard for me to interpret, so I don't really know exactly. But I would like to see that information, is how far away that boundary line is. And then, from a programmatic perspective, and I know this is a further conversation, because we talk about who goes and who stays, and we talked about this when we met, but each of these high schools has programs that are unique. Some of the students attend the high school because they are zoned, and they also are in the program. So, they didn't apply for school choice, but they, they are there as a zoned student who is now attending in that program. The enrollment data, for me, needs to be updated the next time we receive this presentation to include students who are an active student enrolled in the choice program at that school. Because what we know is that more often than not, parents are going to figure out how to get their kid to stay in that program. And so, how many of these Forest students, as an example, since that's what I was just talking about, how many of these Forest students are in, in the C cap? C cap? C? I always want to say CPAP, and I know it's not CPAP, and so...
It's C A P.
Okay, I was so perplexed on not saying CPAP that I couldn't figure it out. How many of those 300 and whatever students are in the C cap program? And again, I know you don't like to make assumptions, but I want to know the data point of how many of those kids are there, because maybe those families would choose to continue to transport or find transportation for their child so that they could continue their program at Forest, because Lake Weir, to my understanding, from a programmatic perspective, does not have anything close to that.
So, I would, the, the comments that I would make on that is, I would caution on making a zoning decision that's going to be a long-range zoning decision based on immediate current data. And also, to make it on, well, this is not enough students because of what potential decisions may or may not be made by parents in choice aspect. That's why whenever I rezone, I always look at as-zoned students, because that's my debt liability. That's what my potential number could be.
Sure.
And so, the decision of what you're addressing, which would be to, you know, which students would get to stay and which students would not get, that's a board decision that would be make on grandfathering or problematic decisions after the rezoning, you know, is done, to be able to establish the process. Because like in the past, we've done rising fifth graders can stay and grandfathered in and things like that. And so, that's a, so, to me, that's a separate conversation from the actual line of rezoning, which is a long-range aspect as opposed to a today aspect.
I understand it, and I can, I can agree with that. I just think that part of the board's decision is based on the numbers that you've presented, and those numbers, I just, this board member needs another column that says how many of those as-zoned students are also participating in the program at that base school? And if no other board member wants that, then that's fine, we don't have to do it.
And so, that's, you know, and I can, and I can agree with what you're saying. That's why I have the column in there as as-zoned attending and as-zone, not zone, attending, because those are percentages that I have to use to project out. And so, that's not a today, and I didn't poll every single parent or every child, are you wanting to say or not, but I have to use a baseline. And so, those percentages are the baselines that I use for my long-range projections. Obviously, those long-range projections could change based on parent decisions, board decisions of allowing to stay or not.
Right.
And so, I would, I, that, that is to be righted. I would just hate to confuse the, the image with today, right now decisions that would impact a long-range rezoning.
Anyone else?
So, I mean, I, I'm just pulling maps, just for conversation's sake and, and for Dr. James' point, I understand why southeast 64th Avenue Road would be a delineation line for zoning, because it, it, while it separates the pecans in Silver Spring Shores, it doesn't go right down the middle of one neighborhood. I mean, it's, there's so many different neighborhoods out there. But to her point, just looking at one of the addresses that are in the proposed zone, it is 1.6 miles from Forest High School, and that's from actually, I think, the parking lot of Forest, not actually the outside. So, it would, it would be within the two miles of, of Forest, just for conversation's sake. But I, I do understand rezoning some of those students from Forest to Lake Weir in the Silver Spring Shores area. I mean, we're going to potentially have some of those conversations again when we have Lake Weir Middle School conversations too, about the Bellevue High and, and those kids, where they're going right now, Bellevue Middle, Bellevue High. I, I don't know that there's another road to use in, in the shores if we were to, to pick a different one. I mean, if you use Pine Road perhaps, then you're probably, if you use Pine, again, not splitting through neighborhoods, but if you use Pine Road in Silver Spring Shores, then you probably would be outside that two miles of the walkable, the county, the county and the state have been trying to build sidewalks out at Merricamp. It's taking them forever, and it's not going to be ready by any stretch. So, kids are not walking from southeast 64th Avenue Road to Forest, I dare say, that if, if there are some, God bless some of them, protect them, Lord, crossing over baseline at Merricamp is on foot or by bicycle would not be recommended by this board member. Nevertheless, I, I understand why we would need to do that. I don't know if there is another delineation line that we could use, and I guess my recommendation would be Pine Road if we were to do that.
Well, and I, and to that point, so, and I, again, this map is a little confusing, but are you saying the majority of those 300 and something students live in these homes that are right here between southeast 64th Avenue and the Walmart?
Yeah.
I, that's, I don't have that in front of me, but I would assume that, yes.
Well, that, that, so, I would really like to get that information, because...
But again, that's students living today.
Right.
You know, tomorrow, five years from now, 10 years from now, when this zoning will still be in effect, we've got to do long-range assumptions as well.
I understand. I'm just thinking, you know, Midway Road, which is the road the Walmart is on, would not break up that neighborhood. But if the purpose is the fact that there are 300 students living in that neighborhood, greater neighborhood, I'm using the word neighborhood as, as more of a collection of homes.
Midway or Bahia?
No, Midway, right here, Midway Road is where the Walmart is.
Walmart and...
The Shores. Yeah. So, I mean, if you did everything north of the Walmart, kept it at Forest, that would certainly, I just, I'm not sure that as a board member, I feel confident having conversations with parents who live less than two miles from Forest and telling them they're going to get now bused to Lake Weir.
I'm fairly confident.
I don't feel confident in that conversation. And that's never going to change, because that house is never moving and Forest is never moving. So, that component is never going to change.
I'm probably confident Mr. Jacobs is watching this, and so, I can assume that he is, as we speak, pulling up the maps and, and looking at that. I can tell you, if we just did a two-mile, you know, just go out two miles, it will be splitting neighborhood.
Who, a neighborhood?
Neighborhood drivable road.
Even Pine Road is.
Yeah. We can look at the number of existing students now and possibly using Bahia or Midway, you know, road, that, that, we can look at that and look at those numbers.
Yeah, to me, that's the only real issue. If we're keeping this as it's presented right now, the only real issue I see is that particular issue, because Forest is so close to that boundary that we're now creating. The rest of them are pretty, you know, to some degree in the middle of, of the boundaries, and so, that is the struggle that I have, that I would like to at least address again. And I'm, you know, the Dunellen, I'm, it's not a hill I'll die on at all, so if we're, if no one's interested in that, then by all means, we can just proceed forward, but...
I'm, Chair, the, the only reason I'm interested in potentially the Dunellen conversation is just for the point that I made earlier, and, and understanding the historical nature of it, that these kids went to Dunellen before there was a Westport High. But, I mean, we're talking two-plus decades ago before we had a Westport High, so I mean, I, I, I mean, Forest was built since Westport has been, so...
Well, and I was talking about the middle school component.
Right. So, I, I just, that, I, no, I understand what you're talking about, but the only way we could get to that is if we didn't have this green box annexed into Dunellen High School. And so, right now, the recommendation is that we...
Correct.
Rezone to refill the Dunellen High School. And so, my concerns, again, are, are, are taking those particular students from Westport. I certainly can respect the need to alleviate the pressure off of Westport, so I, I can see the reason why we need to pull them from Dunellen, or, excuse me, to add them to Dunellen and pull them from Westport there. And I can see how the roads you've chosen are definitive and strong delineation lines. But if we were to have that conversation about combining the two schools at some point, then that, that would be the decision to be made, that we're not pulling those kids from Westport, and they're going to still continue to go to Westport, and Dunellen would then have the reduced population. But these are conversations we have to have right now. Like, I, I don't want to have, I don't want us to decide next year that we're going to go ahead and build this Dunellen Middle High, and all of a sudden, we need to pull some students in or what, and then we've rezoned again?
Yes.
Like, yeah, that's, we have to have this conversation now.
And that was kind of the heart of my trying to be proactive about it, is, we talk about not wanting to rezone students multiple times, and that is the reason for delaying conversations. So, ahead of, ahead of this conversation, if there are other, because we also understand from the Banesh study that the Dunellen population in its core is continuing to grow. So, adding more students to Dunellen High, which is essentially what, that we would be taking these Westport kids and putting them at Dunellen, understanding we're taking kids from Dunellen to put to high school CCC. But if we're filling some seats here, that we're then, we already understand Dunellen is projected to continue to grow, and we have, the board has already said, we want to do a Dunellen Middle High combo site, because we think that is what's best for the community. Are we setting ourselves up for success by doing this now, or will we just have to redo it in five years? And that's why I wanted to bring it up.
We have Reverend Cummings or Board Member Thrower want to chime in? We have Reverend Cummings or Board Member Thrower wanna chime in?
I think I've shared what I have to say.
Okay.
I, I like what's being presented, be honest with you.
We can't hear you.
If we're gonna make tough decisions, let's make the tough decisions. Um, I, I like what Mr. Ayers is presenting right here personally.
I do too. So, Ms. Rowell, can you restate where you found?
Um, I'll just say, you know, this is the, I would need a lot more information about what offlining, the definitions of offlining in school means. And until I have that, then I'm ready to go with the map as presented. I mean, we can parse this all day long. And I appreciate the conversation greatly because the, the difficulty is always in the details and trying to think forward, but we also have to take care of the here and now and go on projections that we have an expert standing in front of us that's done this for a long time is working on and, and there may be some adjust, adjustability with Midway, I think you mentioned, and, and the other road that your man behind the curtain is currently working on. So if that changes, then you can let us know.
I, this board member is not okay with it as presented with the Forest boundary being less than two miles.
So I can get on board with that.
This board member at a minimum wants to see some options in that Forest and Lake Weir rezoning pattern and understanding, is that really the hard stop? Because I, I, those are gonna be some difficult phone calls from parents. They live less than two miles from a school. So I would like to avoid that if possible. I don't, and so I guess, how many, if there are three board members that wanna see that, then maybe we can.
I, I would like to see that too.
And I, I could too. I guess I just wanna make sure that I, I, I didn't have an address to pull that corner in that green section there to make sure that that's not within two miles of Westport High. Because if we're gonna have that conversation about two miles, then let's have a conversation about two miles.
So if you're gonna do it on one side, I can't, let's make it a math equation. What's done on the other side is equal sign, do it on the other side.
Right.
Come on, y'all.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think any of the other boundaries are within two miles. I mean, they're.
That green area for Dunellen, I could guarantee some of those are within two miles of.
Of Westport?
Yeah.
I, I don't.
Mr. Ayers, what I'm hearing is that the board would like to see
Scalability.
Schools, you know, students not rezoned if they're within two miles. That would be our goal. So if you can get us.
And I can do that, but also understand that may involve not hard stop roads.
The, the best that you can do.
Or at least seeing the map as presented today and where those boundaries fall in distance to schools.
Yes.
So at least understanding the information that we have presented. Because it's really hard to look at it like this without road names or anything. So I at least need to see the, you know, even a little like one inch equals two miles and I can take a little ruler. I don't know, but.
If I can, I can probably help adjust that a little bit. My goal is, that would be back on my next steps. Once I got consensus from the board to move forward, even with extra potential changes, we have a website that we currently have to find your school zone. And we have it set up right now for the 25, 24, 25 current school year and the 25, 26 school year. Once I have a go ahead, I can do a proposed website there. That, that way you'll be able to zone down on a granular to the house level. Once I can put it on that, I did not want to put it out there on that until I at least had some consensus from the board that yes, and I'm, I'd be okay with, yes, this plan looks okay with some possible adjustments based on the mileage to the schools and things like that. And then once I can put it out there, then that's easily scalable, easily gone down to the granular level and easily looked at for better decision.
Yes.
So what I would say to that, Mr. Ayers, is your zone for high school CCC, I completely agree with. So I, I don't think that should be expanded anymore. I don't think it should be altered anymore. The students that you have pulling from Dunellen, the Westport, Bellevue High, and then the students in that section uh, in Summerfield that will now be going to Lake Weir High, all of those things I can, I can completely be on board with. I think the only questions that I have, and then we all can speak to that statement, I completely agree with the high school CCC zone that you've created here. Beyond that, I think there are a couple of questions specifically about the, the students currently zoned for Forest going out to Lake Weir and where that line actually needs to be. And additionally, how close, the closest spot is in this new Westport going now to Dunellen is to Westport High School. And if that is not within two miles, then I'm gonna be fine with that as well.
I can, I can, that's easily created data that I can share with the board. I would say by the end of the day tomorrow.
Yeah, great.
That we can, I can share that.
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement with everything Dr. Campbell just said. I just want to know if this, if this green boundary in Forest is within the two miles, I'd like to, to see an alternative option. That is where I, where I stand.
Oh, and I left out, we're also adding students to North Marion. That, that was the other thing that I left out of that. That are currently going to Westport, so.
That is, I can do that. So, um, Board Chairs Direction, my next slide is next steps. So hearing, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board, I'm going to provide for you the email by the end of the day tomorrow, a map that shows the two mile for that Dunellen, Westport to Dunellen and that Forest to Lake Weir zone to show you there. And a potential alternative of to, if we wanna move that out, what it would be and what that impact would be. I can do that by the end of the day tomorrow to you. Then what I would need, and Attorney Powers may have to help me here is, can we, because right now, what I'm hearing is I don't have consensus from the board to move forward with the current plan until you see that revised data. Given the fact that we want, that done, have this done because we've gotta schedule community meetings and this is gonna be a lot of community meetings that will have to be scheduled and make sure a lot of calendars are done. So how can I receive consensus from the board after they get the revised?
No.
No.
Perhaps as a suggestion, at the Chair's discretion, that we could add this into board discussion for our Tuesday evening board meeting. I understand that we're having extensive public conversation about this right now. The public has been duly notified about this conversation. And if that is the only thing we need to button up on Tuesday evening is which of two maps to choose, then would that be okay? If the Chair agrees that we add that to the Tuesday night board meeting and then we can reach consensus at that time without an actual official board vote, but it could just be a conversation for discussion purposes.
And I wanna make that clear, none of this is an official board vote.
Sure. This would be for consensus building.
It could be in comments.
Yeah, it could be in comments.
Right, but being added to Tuesday evening as, when you could get at least consensus one way or another, and that's Attorney Powers, I'm looking at him.
Procedurally, that would be fine. I would say that it needs to be put on if we know that it's gonna be put on for discussion, should be put on as an agenda item instead of as a walk-on just during our
Right.
uh, comments. That way, those items can be uploaded because there are things that you'll be relying on.
And that would be up to the Chair and all of us understanding now that the Chair would make this an item for Tuesday evening, knowing that the board, that the community had full notice that today we were having this conversation, including the maps and all of that. Because I know sometimes that has been a concern of board members, that we have something that the, that the community wasn't fully aware of seven days prior. But if we are having that conversation now and with the Chair's approval, adding that as a board discussion item to Tuesday evening's board meeting, where we're not voting, we're just reaching consensus. And then Ms. Martinez could create the item, upload these items, and then whatever you come up with as the new thing we receive.
I, I feel comfortable with that.
There would be no procedural bar to what you described. That's what the Board George chooses to do.
I, I don't know why we need to add an item though. I don't know why the superintendent in her comments could not say, "Board, Mr. Ayers has emailed you following up the conversation from the 23rd. Mr. Ayers has emailed you two maps. Which of those maps do you show preference to?" Why does it have to be adding an additional item?
He's just trying to be more transparent.
Transparent. So the community can actually see the item as we're discussing it and what we're specifically discussing.
That's correct. The item actually is a choice between two maps. That for transparency purposes, that would be something that, um, the public should be provided with.
Well, then they should have been properly noticed.
Which they have been for today.
I agree. I, I agree.
That's, I mean, I'm never gonna be in agreement with adding an item to a meeting.
I know, I know. I know it is a sticking point.
Unless it's an emergency. And if it's not an emergency, this school opens in 18 months.
Right. And so it doesn't require, uh, it, you know, consensus. It requires, I mean, it, at this point, it's under the Chair's purview. If that's what the Chair wants to say.
I, Mr. Ayers, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable with adding that to Tuesday night.
I'm, I will do what the board.
You, that's enough time for you and you can have two maps prepared for us to go over.
I should have the two maps. I mean, I would, I would wanna say by the end of the day today, but I got stuff that I, I mean.
Did we give you a list, Mr. Ayers?
I have a few other things on my table.
I mean, that, that is, that is, and I know because I'm often in the same boat that Mr. Ayers finds himself in right now. That is a rapid turnaround time for him to get a lot of things that the board's requesting done. So procedurally, as Careful say, there's no bar to this. You can set it that way. You can, you can make it on this hustle. However, that does mean that everything else he's got going on in his career right now, everything else he's got going on with, with his, with his assignments and responsibilities has to go on hold because this is gonna have to go be a priority item, so.
Point of clarification. When I look at my timeline, if you can look at, I'm on slide 19, if you're able to see that. My goal was to get this done by the end of April. But if we need to push back to get a proper notice and a proper, you know, discussion item, that's not a vote, and that's what I wanna make the clear. This is not a vote. These are the webs, these are the things. This is what I'm requesting from the board is once we settle on a map. This is just the preliminary map that we're gonna go forward, that we're gonna seek input from and all that. I still have to have rule development work sessions. And in my, my mind, I'm planning two of those. You know, an initial one where we present where the board could say, hey, based upon input, we, we wanna see another option, go back. So I haven't, I would do another before we would even go forward with that. The goal here is, yes, the school opens August 2026. My goal is to give families as much time, especially at high school, not to say that elementary or middle school, but there's lots of decisions that need to be made at a high school level. The window opens for applications for magnet programs is November 1st. So hypothetically, anytime before November 1st, we're okay. But we wanna give plenty, plenty of time. So if we have to wait until a proper notice is done.
I just don't know why.
We have the time to do that if that is required. If that is required or needed or through the board.
I just don't think we should, we should not provide proper notice to the community when they're, this is not an emergency. We could have this, this be a very quick agenda item on February 6th work session. You present the two options, we make a decision, and then it can already be an agenda item for the following school board meeting. And it doesn't even need to be an item. So we can have a discussion February 6th and you proceed. I mean, the students who did school choice for this school year, who are gonna be freshmen next year in '25, already, I mean, in seven days, that seven, eight days, that, that, that opportunity is closed. So those students are already going to be making decisions about school choice this spring and they would be freshmen next year and then presumably be rezoned. So that is already happening. So the urgency attached to this is really not going to make any difference for those rising freshmen other than maybe their parents in May or, or this summer would decide, you know what? We're not gonna do school choice for, um, this school because we're gonna get rezoned to this school in a year from now. So I don't, I don't understand the urgency and I don't see why we should, we should not provide public notice if there is, I mean, two, uh, two weeks is not gonna make a difference.
Okay, Mr. Ayers, it seems like it's the pleasure of the board to do this on, uh, February 6th. So if that's good for you.
Already here that day.
I thought, I thought we just said we were gonna do it Tuesday night.
Yeah, I, I did too. And it's, and it's up to you, Chair. This is, you can certainly take our input, but as a previous Chair, and I think all the ones of us who've served, it's completely up to you where you want to put this on and.
Yes, Board Member Thrower.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm confused because we were originally talking about putting this in during the superintendent's comment time, in which there would have been no public notice at all.
Right.
Um, and I wasn't really comfortable with that if there was, the Chair's discretion could go ahead and put it on as an item, considering that we have extensive conversation today that anyone can go back and look at and we're gonna post all the maps and show the timeline. Um, I, I feel like we're going down the road of, of adjusting operations timelines and, and determining whether or not they're valid or not, when this is what's been presented to us is what they feel they need to do the job right. So I, I, my input is, let's go ahead and put it on as a discussion item for Tuesday night. That's what I would do as the board chair, considering this, everything I just said. And let's get this done and let's try to stick to the timeline that has been presented to us by the people that have been doing this for.
Right. Well, and I, the reason that I moved forward that originally is because Mr. Ayers said, and I felt like not under duress, that he could get this to us tomorrow by tomorrow.
Right.
So I didn't, and Mr. Ayers, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I felt that was a very doable thing. And for me, the discussion is all fresh in our mind.
Yeah.
The community knows, um, that we were having this conversation today. So I don't, I didn't feel like we were pulling something, you know, out of our hat, a surprise agenda item. Um, so Reverend Cummings, would you like to weigh in?
I thought we were gonna hear it Tuesday night, so I, he, I'm hearing the same thing, that it's doable. He would love, love for, he's not gonna say that, but I'll say it for him. Let's get it done and get it pushed through. So let's have the conversation Tuesday.
Okay, so I'm amending my previous statement. Uh, at the pleasure of the majority of the board, we'll add this to Tuesday the 6th. Sorry, I've closed up my calendar. The 28th, January 28th.
Now, Ms. Martinez, for creation of the item, is Mr. uh, is, is that gonna be you that creates the item or is it? Okay. And Mr. Ayers, uh, can you get with?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez to upload the items necessary for that agenda item?
And so what I will be uploading is our original map.
Okay.
Yes.
Option one, and then map of option two, which will basically adjust the Forest to Lake Weir outside of a two mile zone. And if the Dunellen to Westport is within the two mile zone, adjusting to that and have two different options.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may clarify then, the documents you've just referenced, Mr. Ayers would be uploaded, submitted for uploading by the end of the day tomorrow?
If I could beg the board's permission, yes. Because that will give me the rest of today and tomorrow to not rush it, but make sure that the data is, and because I, I say I, Mr. Jacobs, you know, is going to create the maps and then we'll review the maps and go and double check everything to do that. So yes, I think if I could give it to, by, by five o'clock tomorrow to be uploaded, the board docs, I think that will give me enough time to, to verify the data and do all that.
Very good.
Thank you.
And so by uploading, that will preclude me having to email each one of you. It will be uploaded.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Ayers? All right. Mr. Ayers, thank you very much for all of your expertise and patience today as we worked through a lot of these zoning issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing and hearing none.
Um, let me just ask, on that item, you want that to be a, a voting item to choose between the two? Or is it, my understanding is it'd just be a consensus item?
Yeah, please no vote.
Discussion with consensus, no vote.
We don't get to vote till for a while.
I just wanted to confirm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting reminders. Um, there's a school board meeting scheduled for January 28th, 2025 at 5:30 PM, which we were just discussing. Um, I have a here, note here that we'll be moving back, um, no, that we will be here at the County Commissioner's Auditorium. Uh, sorry about that. There's a special board meeting on February 6th at 7:00 AM. The next administrative briefing and work session is set, scheduled for February 6th, 2025 at 9:00 AM. A reminder that, um, MTI board meetings will be back at MTI for the month of February. Dr. Gullett, we have confirmation on that, that the auditorium is, will be ready?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have not received any update to the contrary that it would not be ready, but I'll certainly let the board know, uh, today if I hear anything different.
Okay, perfect. Very good. All right. Thank you for that. Um, I'm gonna go around for board comments, excuse me, board comments. Ms. Martinez?
Yes, Madam Chair, just two items. Um, board members, your reservation for February 12th and 13th. Those packets will be in your mailbox by the end of today. And then I received an email from FSBA for a day in the legislature for March 19th and 20th in Tallahassee. So I just would like to know by tomorrow by five, who's planning to attend? Because it's my understanding from the email that FSBA will not be holding any rooms or blocks of rooms. So I can't guarantee, you know, that you will all be in the same hotel should you decide to come. So I can't guarantee, you know, that you will all be in the same hotel should you decide to come. But if you could let me know by tomorrow by five, I would appreciate it so I could get started on those reservations.
Okay. Board, those dates.
It's spring break.
Is that during spring break?
Yes, it's always during spring break.
It was on my list, I, I was gonna bring it up too.
At a spring break, yes.
Would you like anyone to let you know if they're not going to be going? Because I'm not gonna be going.
I'm not either.
I'm not.
I won't be going.
We're, I'm not going.
Okay, so no one's going?
Yeah.
Nah.
No.
Okay.
So we're not going.
You're not going.
So that takes care of that.
That was easy.
Yes.
Easy peasy, I like that one.
Yeah, the timing is really challenging.
Our day in the legislature is in February.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's spring break. We need, we gonna need a break by then.
Thank you, board.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Martinez?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Powers?
Just wanted to, uh, make sure all board members were aware, uh, every month, we have truancy court, um, once a month. Uh, next, it's not this Friday, but next Friday, June thirty-first. Of course, most of you have attended at some point or another. Um, just to kind of see what happens, introduce yourself to the judge, get also to see a little bit about how truancy court operates and works and answer any questions you might have. Um, you are certainly all welcome and any or all of you to attend. It's, uh, January thirty-first, court begins at nine. We usually have status conference hearings, um, through ten thirty. And then ten thirty, we generally move into order to show cause hearings for situations in which there's not been compliance. Um, however, um, you get to see the ups and downs and the positives and success stories and the ones that are still in progress. So if, uh, any of you would like to do that, you are certainly welcome to attend. Uh, if you'll let me know in advance, I'll print out extra copies of paperwork for you guys to have so you can follow along.
Thank you. That was very, very interesting.
Can I ask Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir.
Can we just get legal to send us like a standing calendar invite for that? Because oftentimes I want to go, but it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
I find the date of, so if we just get a standing calendar invite.
Oh, I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
You know, my, my tendency is always try not to, not to bother you guys with stuff that I find routine, but sometimes I forget that you really, you know, that, that's really important stuff for you guys to see and that you enjoy doing that, so.
Yeah.
I would, I would be honored and happy to send you invites to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Just to confirm, I already have received information that the board room will be ready at MTI for February. So as planned, uh, and that concludes my comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Very interesting meeting, always, um, a lot of robust conversation. I, I, I enjoy being on this board with you guys. Because, um, there is diversity of our thinking on what we want to do for the district, so I appreciate that. Um, just a PSA, um, it's gonna be cold the next few nights. Um, I know we get the, the, uh, weather briefing from EOC, but we need to kind of remind people that there are some cold weather shelters in the area. I would hate to see, um, we do have some homeless students, homeless families, and they need to know that there is, um, Salvation Army is open. When it's cold. That's it.
All right, thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. James?
Thank you. Uh, to that note, I wanted, I wanted to say, um, I'm grateful that we did not close our schools because of the cold weather. Um, I saw a comment on social media and it, and it reminded me of why it is so important we remain open. Because had we closed, there are a lot of families who do not have heat in their homes. And those students would have been in a home with no heat instead of in a school with heat. And so keeping our schools open at all possible, in my opinion, is always going to be the best interest of our students. Um, Attorney Powers or Chair Conrad, do you have an update on our listing agreement? I know when we finished that in our last meeting, we kind of said the chair is going to make decisions and we're going to. And so are we listed? Are we in action? Do we have an update?
I actually, I haven't received an update. That, um, we finished.
I can have one for you by Tuesday. I don't, I don't have an immediate one now.
It, it did take two days. I, I had to sign a, uh, an amendment for a name. There was a spelling error issue with the name. Um, and so it did take me, I think, two days to get connected, um, with Mr. McGraw for that, so, um, but I haven't heard anything since then.
Okay. Um, well, this board member wants to see that property get listed. Um, so whatever we can do to communicate with Mr. McGraw to ensure that that's getting taken care of, um, I would like to see happen because we have an opportunity to create a little bit of revenue to offset some of our other costs. So, um, that's the only other thing I had.
Sure.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you. All right, Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. Um, yep, another, uh, robust meeting for sure and, um, also very glad that we did not close schools. Um, you know, we'll never have a hundred percent approval, but we're always working to try to do, uh, offer opportunities, um, for, for everyone. And I felt like it got a little lost in the translation that if anyone wasn't feeling like it was the right thing for their child to come to school, there's way too many mommy notes, in my opinion, that are accepted. So, you know, write the note, excuse the absence and move on with life. Um, and I do worry about our staff, you know, they, they come from long distances as well to drive to work. And in those situations, you know, common sense really needs to prevail. I mean, if you're trying to get out your driveway and there's a tree down and you don't have a chainsaw, I, I, I mean, I don't, it, schools should not be closed because of that situation, you know? Um, so it's, it's tough, um, because the last thing I would want would be for the board to be considered to be not sympathetic to anyone's individual situation. But that's why we're here to stay open as much as we possibly can and then everyone else can make their individual, decision that's best for them and their family. And there is a bright spot here because I did notice on social media, people were saying, well, all they care about is attendance. And I was like, yes. That, that was a win in Nancy's book.
It is a top priority.
It is a top priority.
Yeah, so, yes. And so I think that that word is starting to get out, that yes, of course, we care deeply about attendance, but, um, we also understand excused absences. Emphasis on excused absence. So let's, uh, keep our perspective here, people. I was disappointed because of the weather, that it just wasn't the, the best thing to, um, get over to Vanguard High School. Uh, they had to bring for their inspection, military inspection and ceremony, they had to bring it indoors because, um, our cadets are not issued, um, you know, uh, yes, Michigan quality jackets. So I, I was really sad about, uh, missing that. It was a much smaller ceremony than it typically is in the past. And it was really hard for me to accept orders that were, uh, friendly made from Lieutenant Commander Davis. But Lieutenant Commander Davis, I, I did listen to your orders and what was going on in the field. Um, but I know it was great. I heard from Dr. Gullett that you were already out and about and, um, were able to stop by briefly and, and I know that, um, Lieutenant Commander Davis did justice to, uh, the, the event. And, and I was especially sorry because our former, uh, student board member, uh, Sanjay Karthik, who is, um, in that uh, group, uh, had issued us personal invitations. So anyway, um, sometimes it is really hard to make those judgment calls and listen to others. So, uh, with that, that's, that's all I have. Um, have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. I too am grateful we kept school open. I know, uh, what the Weather Channel app was saying, the projected temperatures were gonna be, were different than what the Weather Service was saying in the emergency, uh, oper, and I'm grateful, first of all, I think this has been an interesting science lesson for folks that have not grown up outside of the state of Florida, that you won't have ice on roads if the actual temperature does not drop below thirty-two degrees. Doesn't hit thirty-two degrees, let me say that. And so folks who have only grown up in Florida don't often see those temperatures. And so saying it's quote unquote freezing, when actually it's not, has been a real science lesson, I think, for a lot of folks. And that is not wind chill. So wind chill can be in the twenties, it has to be the actual temperature that takes the water to below, uh, to freeze at, at thirty-two degrees. So it's been an interesting science lesson, I think, and, and folks have been schooling each other, I think, on social media, so that's been kind of interesting to watch. But I too am grateful that we kept our schools open. We already talked about the day in the legislature, that was on my list. I wanted to make sure that the board knew as your advocacy and legislative liaison that I am not going to be attending day in the legislature because it is during spring break and unfortunately, that's the way it works. Sometimes with FSBA, additionally, we have a regional crown meeting that is on the same day as a school board work session, which I told them that they might want to look at every school board's calendar. About that, we have a standing meeting all the time, but yet they are still having that meeting. So at this juncture, I don't believe, based, until we see what that agenda is gonna look like, I don't think we can go to Bradford County for that either because of our work session that day. Uh, but just for a point of note, you all probably have seen and, and we received it from Jessica Jenna Seewitz, that there is a special session that the governor has called for next week. Um, but the committee meetings that were scheduled for this week have been delayed and canceled because of the weather in Tallahassee. So there, there, that actually freed up some things. I talked to Rep. Pence and she actually might be working on some language for something that, um, Dr. James and I are, are very interested in. Um, and so, uh, nevertheless, that potentially will alter somewhat, uh, committee week schedule. The week we are going to be there because of this week's committee weeks being changes, um, canceled. And so what we're gonna be hearing when we're there may be altered. Um, as, as soon as we know what that looks like, and you all know, they don't know what committee week schedule actually looks like until usually Thursday or Friday the week before. So we won't know what the schedule is for our twelfth and thirteenth yet. And we probably won't until just a few days before. So I just wanted to, to make you all aware of that. As I have told you, um, I know at least one of our legislators will not be there on the thirteenth, so we will definitely need to meet with him on the twelfth. Uh, but there may be meetings on both days and we'll know that as soon as possible. Uh, this has been a very productive meeting. I continue to be grateful, as Reverend Cummings mentioned, the diversity of thought that we have on this board and, uh, the, the research that each one of us does individually, as well as the frame of reference that we come from when we, when we each come to this table to make decisions. I'm, I'm grateful for, I think that it's, um, each one of our opinions are valid and we are all duly elected to do the job that we're here to ser, to serve the people and our students. So, um, with that, thank you so much.
Thank you, board. I just have a few things. Um, the ICROC, uh, committee is meeting today at four. I, just a quick reminder, I think Dr. Gullett mentioned that at the beginning. That was quite some time ago. Um, Ms. Thrower, I did go be, to the Vanguard unit review yesterday, Dr. Gullett did also. Um, because MC, he said MCPS employees could go. So I did go, it really was, um, amazing. Uh, Sanjay did a fabulous job. The whole unit did a fantastic job and just really proud of the work that's going on, um, all over, really, all over the district, um, in the area of ROTC. So just a shout out to them because they, they did have to amend their plan and their, I won't say performance, I don't think that's right, but their routine, their review. And so they did a great job adjusting, um, and getting that done. So it was, that was a fabulous time. Um, also last night, there was a farewell for Kevin Shealy. Um, I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Gullett and I happened to be there. Um, we did have a card and a certificate for him to thank him, uh, for the work and effort. Um, he's put into helping Marion County schools move forward, um, particularly in the area of funding. So wanted to let you know that, um, we did make a, we did show up for that and was able to say thank you. Um, I did ask Dr. Gullett for a work session item. Um, I met with Beth McCall the other day. And so, um, board, I would like to find more information about the skip mentoring program. There really is a lot, um, that goes into that, uh, mentoring program. And so at the conclusion of our meeting, she said, I'm gonna reach out and speak with each board member. And I said, well, I'd really like that to be a public conversation. I'd like for the public to know what our students receive. You know, all of the things that she was sharing with me and the resources that are available. So I did ask Dr. Gullett's gonna work on that, uh, for me, so that should be coming forward. And, yes.
Just wanted to ask you a question about that, uh, for skip, because I think it's a great idea. And I'm thinking that it's in alignment with one of the goals of our strategic plan, um, the improving student performance and so on. So that if we're gonna do a work session with skip, that it might not be a bad idea, and this is just off the top of my head, because you just said it, um, to include some of our other, um, mentoring.
Organizations that are coming.
I did think that too. Yeah. So.
I mean, that would be, if we're gonna extend an opportunity to one nonprofit to share what they do, I think it would be in the best interest of our district to support, uh, to extend an opportunity for every nonprofit that is working with us in some capacity, or I don't know, come up with a threshold, I don't know, but I certainly wouldn't want to extend an opportunity to one nonprofit and not others.
Sure, I'm open to that. It's just the, the conversation lent itself to, um, coming forward and they approached me. And so, um, I, I'm open to that, having everyone, giving everybody the same opportunity is fine. Dr. Gullett, you're leaning forward, any comment?
Um, not, not specific to that. It sounds like the board has had that conversation, will include the mentoring programs, all the mentoring programs we have. It may even, uh, if I may, include the, the internal one, Dare to be Great, if that's,
Okay.
if that's acceptable to the board. I just actually sneak preview to an interview I did for my weekly update, talking about how we're serving our, our community. Uh, I do have a question when you're done, Chair, about, um, one of the work session comments I heard.
I, Dr. Gullett, I think that might be, um, the end, that's, I think, all that I had to share today. So yes, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. I know it's been a long day, board. I heard reference to the regional meeting for FSBA, so went to my calendar, which is, if this is correct, February twentieth, which is our work session. So I bring that up because the only topic right now on that particular one is an item for you, board. That's the RSM internal audit presentation. I will not be here that meeting because that conflicted with the, uh, superintendent meeting out of town that came up after we did our organizational meeting. So it's up to the board and Ms. Boston Ellis, because that's her item anyway for the board, and of course, the auditors report to you. If you want that moved, we can move it. If not, leave that alone, but, um, I won't be here either, so. Or you, and you can let me know later, I just thought this was a good time to bring that up since you've mentioned and referenced that other meeting.
Chair?
Yes. Allison, what time does the crown meeting start?
I believe it starts at noon. I'll double check that right now, but I, I believe it starts at noon, uh, and it is in Bradford County, so we would have to have drive time. How long is that travel time? At least an hour?
At least an hour. I mean, if we do the meeting.
But we've already scheduled with the auditor though to come. Ms. Martinez, is that, do we, that's a third party, so I'm assuming some level of scheduling has already happened for them to come here. Maybe not from you, but.
But, yeah.
I'm sure Ms. Reese Boston Ellis has.
We'll start at nine, our work sessions.
If we don't add anything else to that agenda.
Then we could leave and go. Okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I, I wouldn't want to reschedule on a third party. It's not like we're rescheduling our own staff, it's someone who's coming here to present to us, so.
Okay. And let's get it done.
Okay, we not add anything else to that agenda?
That, that's the plan. So that's why I say, board, this is for you, this is your purpose, and I would agree, I mean, that we've scheduled with them. I would have to ask if they could reschedule, but I just heard the conversation, I didn't know what the timing was for your meeting. We'll move forward.
Not right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I do, I do have one update based on what was requested earlier. Um, I reached out to, uh, Mr. McGraw and Alexandra Scales, um, while we were, um, having our board discussion. They indicate they just did speak with them, they're building out the listing package now. Um, and the photographer, photographer will be on site Monday. Warehouse should be listed early next week. I do know that my office ordered the keys for the warehouse, um, and, uh, and the Scales picked them up. And, uh, what we found out, we got the two sets of keys so they can get in and get to the gate and do all that, so they can get in there for the photographer. What I do know is that I did not know that we should have also ordered a alarm code, so.
Oh.
We, we had a little bit of a, of a quick, of a quick response time to try to take care of that as well. So, um, yes, that was, it will be listed, uh, early next week.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That was very quick, Attorney Powers, thank you for that.
And our crown regional meeting, actually on the twentieth, begins at one PM. So we, if we add nothing else to the agenda, we should be, but prior to your telling us, we didn't know what was on that agenda, so thank you.
All right.
We don't have access to that information.
Okay. Time to stop and start.
Two quick, quick, quick things. Um, because I didn't say it, all other board members said it, I too am glad that we did not close schools. Not only is it a, a warm place, but it may have been an opportunity where a kid got a meal that they wouldn't have gotten.
Absolutely.
Had they been at home. But then the other, the final thing is, I do want to thank the, uh, board of county commissioners once again for allowing us to be in this space.